Announcements and recognition. At this time, I would ask a member of, or representative of the Public Services Department of the city if you can meet me at the podium. Special proclamation presented for Engineers Week.
Whereas engineers use their scientific skills and specialized knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs. And whereas engineers help solve major technological challenges of our time from designing efficient building systems and rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters. And whereas engineering has been called the invisible profession because everything around us and things we use every day have been engineered in some way, yet we may not see the engineers behind the scenes or know much about engineering. And whereas founded in 1951, National Engineers Week is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by increasing understanding of and interest in engineering and technology careers. And whereas Engineer Week is formal collaboration of more than 70 engineer, engineering education and cultural societies and more than 50 corporations and government agencies dedicated to raising public awareness of engineers' positive contributions of quality of life. And whereas Engineer Week promotes recognition among parents, teachers, and students of the importance of technological education and high level of math, science, and technology literacy, and motivates youth to pursue engineering careers to provide, to provide a diverse and vigorous engineering workforce. And now therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim February 18th through the 24th, 2024, as National Engineers Week. And I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the important contributions of engineers to our daily lives. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand and have caused this official seal of Fayetteville, North Carolina to be affixed since 21st day of February 2024. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Well, certainly, thank you, Mayor Protem, for reading that, and thank you to the engineers. And we'd be remiss, I need to acknowledge our former councilwoman, Shaquilla Ingram, who's here. How you doing, ma'am? Good to see. All right, councilors, we move forward. I have another presentation. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
On the mic? Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you, Mayor. As we end the Black History Month, I wanted to take the time to recognize former council member, Ms. Mabel Smith. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it today, but I will read the proclamation. Whereas, Mabel C. Smith is a native and lifelong contributing citizen of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and a former council member who served three terms on the City Council from the late 1900s to the early 2000s. And whereas her interest in politics and activism began when she was just a teenager. As soon as she was eligible, she began voting and organizing. She signed up new voters, many people who had never voted before. She was just 19. Whereas, May 2023, the City of Fayetteville honored Ms. Smith with a park in her name. And whereas the City of Fayetteville honors and celebrates Ms. Smith for her fight for disfranchised, for always being a fierce advocate for the city, Mabel Smith is a force of possibility and stabilizing influence on those around her. And now therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, Mayor of City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the City Council and more than 2,008 citizens, 1,002, I'm sorry, 208,000 citizens do hereby proclaim February 26th in the year 2024 in honor of Mabel Smith Day. And again, she wasn't able to make it today because of, she's under the weather, but thank you all for supporting her. And thank you, Mabel Smith.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Banks-McLaughlin. And I see they'll give that to Ms. Denise, her daughter. I'm sure she'll get it to her mom. But thank you, Ms. Smith, for your contributions to the city and just changing history, so certainly worthwhile. As we move to the next item, we have a certificate presentation. I'll go back to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Tiffany Campbell, if you can come to the podium. For those who do not know who Ms. Campbell is, look, she's received quite a few accolades over the last couple of months. She has done so much here in our community, bringing people together. Her most recent events were the 100 Black Professionals that was hosted downtown. It was a wonderful turnout, to the point where she had to do it again and have the men involved. So I wanted to thank you just for your activism. You are a staple in our community. You're young. I hope and pray that you continue to keep bringing people together, and not just adults, the youth came out. And that's one of the things you also do. You work with the youth, and you have been an advocate against gun violence. So thank you for your service. We really appreciate you, and I'm gonna come down and give you this award. And I was gonna say, if your fam, I was gonna say, if your family and those who support her, please stand if you don't mind.
First off all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for just supporting my vision. It's not possible without people supporting your dream, so I definitely appreciate that. I just appreciate what we have going next. I appreciate all the women, the networking I'm seeing, all the men, and what's going on with them. And I'm also looking forward to the Sneaker Ball on Saturday where we're able to turn around and do the same exact thing for kids. It's not really networking as in professional, but you know, it's networking as in getting them to know each other, positive people. And so I just look forward to, you know, continuing to see her out and doing more things. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, well, thank you. We have one more announcement. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I want to ask that we take a brief moment of silence for the passing of a great city councilman from Flint, Michigan, Representative of the First Ward, Mr. Eric Mays, this past Saturday, February 24th, 2024. I hope that all future points of order can be made in his honor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. All right, councilors, we have moved through the announcements of recognition. I'll go to the city manager to have some additional information.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As always, I'd like to ask citizens, if you are not signed up for the city manager's report, if you would please go to the city's website and do so. We send that every week, and we try to make it as informative and interesting as possible with information about happenings in the City of Fayetteville, as well as things going on inside city government. I'd also like to say thank you, Mayor, members of council as well, for the time off over the last couple of weeks to take care of my mom. Prayer changes things. She's always been a wonder woman to me, but now she's a bionic woman with more hardware on her than probably she ever thought she'd have. But I talked to her today, and she was busy tidying up her house and preparing to actually go shopping as well. So again, I thank nothing but prayer. So thank you both.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Certainly, you know, wish your mother a speedy recovery and good health. Councilors, we move to the agenda approval. This was, this was something that was proposed to me, and council, I'll leave it at your discretion. I know we have a lot of citizens here for the upcoming items in 9.01 and possibly 10.01 if it's not some other action taken. Were you all amenable to moving that after consent, when you approved the agenda? So what it would be, you know, the public safety reports, certainly anyone can, is welcome to stay. I'm just trying to take in consideration some, some who are here to speak. Are you amenable to letting, huh, letting 9.01 come after the consent? And then we'll go into the public safety presentations. And who, whoever would like to say, we're just trying to be mindful of those who are here for a specific item, so there's not behind the report. You know, public safety can take a couple of hours sometimes, so. But council, when you approve the agenda, if you're okay with that, you could just make that item, how would that work, Madam Attorney? Would you make it item, what, 8.01A or something?
You're just rearranging, so I don't, I don't really see the need to renumber it. You're just gonna change the order?
Okay, yeah, yeah, if council agrees here.
Yes, sir.
All right, council, any questions, comments on that? We following? Okay, all right, all right. Yeah, we'll need a motion to approve the agenda. All right, so is that, is a motion by Mayor Protem to approve the agenda, is there a second? Second, all right. I see y'all are voting already, okay. Seconded by Councilmember Davis. All right, council, any discussion? I look to you for your votes to approve the agenda. With, with the changes. Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, that work for you? All right. Moving to the consent items, 7.02, I think was Councilmember Davis? Was, it was, it was here? Yeah. All right, Councilmember here, I'll call on you for consent.
Okay, okay, yeah, there we are. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. I would like to pull item 7.02 of the consent, just to give the community an opportunity to know exactly what's going on in the Summer Hill community, and we can take that for an up or down vote after it's explained by staff.
So Councilmember here has a motion to approve seven, consent items with the exception of 7.02, and there was also a 7.08 by, was it Councilmember Mahandros?
No, I'm okay with the 7.08.
All right. All right, council, there's a motion to approve by, with the exception of 7.02, which will be a separate action. So any, any, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson. All right, council, I look to you. Any discussion on the motion?
I'm sorry, sir. We had discussion about 7.09. Are we still doing that one? No? Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think Mr. Benevente, if he was interested in doing that, he can let it be known. I think he was gonna move it, but I, I do think, once we get to that, we'll instruct that to go to a work session item. Mr. Hugh, did you hear what you needed already? All right. All right, council, any other discussions on seven, seven-point items? All right, you voted?
We're waiting on me.
Waiting on me? All right. Y'all keep that spirit up tonight. All right. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimous. So moving now to the rearranged item, yes, 7.02. I'll go to you, Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular item follows, is, it's in my Summer Hill community, and at our last Summer Hill community meeting, it was asked of me what was taking place on those vacant lots there on Summer Hill Road, and please give us an explanation. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council. My name is Demetrius Mutos. For all those in attendance, I'm Planner One for the City of Fayetteville. Just trying to pull this up real quick. There it is. All right, so these two properties here on Summer Hill Road are just off the corner of Yadkin Road and Summer Hill Road, just to the south of 295. There's a military surplus store, sort of north of these two properties there on the corner. It's behind a Marathon gas station, and then there's a tattoo parlor across Yadkin Road, kind of directly across from the entrance to the subdivision there. The properties are currently zoned, community commercial and office institutional, and the applicant's just trying to rezone them back to Single Family Residential 10, which is what the rest of the residential subdivision is, and their intent is to develop it as such as the rest of the subdivision.
And, and, and on that particular, those lots, how many structures can be built?
It's just one single-family home on each of those lots, if it was rezoned to Single Family 10.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted them, they wanted to know. Mayor, I move to approve item 7.02.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember here to approve 7.02. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries 10-0, unanimous by those voting. All right, council, moving to the rearranged item, 9.01, it's a public hearing item. All right. Now we're moving to the public hearing, where the City Council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak in the hearing for tonight should have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with a staff presentation, then we'll move into the formal hearing. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed to items of the hearing. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case that person may use the entire 15 minutes. So again, at the conclusion, when the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and you then may begin addressing the council. At 30 seconds, you'll be, you'll hear a buzz to notify you that you have 30 seconds remaining, and at the end of your allotted time, you will be notified that your time has expired again. Due to policy restrictions, these are the terms of the public hearing. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Heather Eckhart. I'm a Planner Two here at the City of Fayetteville. P2353 is a request at 1040 Stamper Road to rezon that parcel from Single Family 10, Single Family Residential 10 to Single Family Residential 6. Roughly a quarter acre lot, located on Stamper Road, north of Bragg Boulevard and east of Kane Road. Property is currently, again, zoned Single Family 10, surrounded by Single Family 10, with the exception of the MR5 to the west. Land use plan calls for this area to be developed as medium-density residential, which does call for single-family with duplexes and town, townhomes interspersed. As you can see, the property is currently vacant and wooded. Surrounding areas have all been, been developed as single-family homes. Land use plan calls for, again, medium-density residential, which is single-family developments on small lots with duplexes and townhomes interspersed. The small size of this property would limit expansive development that would not be in keeping with the surrounding area. Any other development other than a single-family home would require a special use permit in full compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance, and the proposed change is modest and in keeping with the future land use plan. Professional planning staff is recommending that City Council move to approve the MAP Amendment to Single Family 6. Zoning Commission voted four to one at their meeting to deny the request. This item is before you on appeal. And of course, your options are to approve as presented, approve with a more restrictive zoning district, or deny the request. And that is all.
All right, thank you. You had a question for staff? Mr. Here?
Yes, unless this is something that we would wait, I wanted to understand, know why, what was the pushback from zoning, the committee?
Zoning Commission, the people in attendance had concerns about potential development of the site as something other than a single-family home.
All right.
Okay. All right, yeah, thank you, Mayor.
All right, so with that, thank you. Don't go too far, Ms. Eckhart. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we have one person speak.
Excuse me. Let me open the public key.
Sorry. We have one person speaking in favor, and I have six in opposition. Our first speaker is Mr. Tim Evans.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Tim Evans, 4239 Cameron Road, Rockfish Ron Land and Development. I would like to share an observation with the council, and I hope, I won't make this too long, but of my 20 years in real estate and developing, I've come to the conclusion that when we have a lot or a tract of land somewhere that's been overlooked for various reasons, that people that live around it come to the conclusion that nothing's ever going to happen there. Last year, P.O. Sori, Sornio, the son of the late Pedro, who founded Pedro's restaurant here in town, I bought a piece of property from him in Gray's Creek where I reside, and P.O. asked me to look at a lot that he had on Stamper Road, and I told him I would. After looking at this small lot on Stamper Road that's very easily to drive by every day, I told P.O. that I would like to look into this lot to see what possibly could be done there. And I did meet with Craig Harmon about this lot. Craig shared with me what the city's UDO said about what could go there and what couldn't. Checked with PWC on this, and I'll make this brief, and PWC told me in a roundabout way that this little tract of land was probably overlooked at the time that Greenwood Homes was developed, and Greenwood Homes was developed in the 50s. So for some unknown reason, no builder wanted this lot and passed on it, and by that, I assumed that PWC felt like there was no need to run their water and sewer by the front of it. So needless to say, on this particular lot, if we move forward with putting a duplex, two units, two units only, the cost is $17,220, which I can pass that around and show, and if we would choose to go with single-family, almost $15,000. I have 15 minutes. Okay, I'm sorry.
Some type of amber, was it a file?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
Okay.
I was like, whoa, that was fast.
Yeah. Go ahead, sir.
So, so, council, you know, I know I have opposition here tonight, and I want to be very fair and open about this. If you're familiar with Stamper Road, it's a cut-through road beside of Utah Shopping Center, and the bulk of Stamper Road, I think it would be true to say, is mainly rentals, okay? On the, what would be the west side of Stamper Road, you have all the duplexes behind Utah Shopping Center that board that road. And what I have spoke to the opposition in our last meeting was, I can assure them of this, there will only be two units there, and it is of my opinion that this new construction in this neighborhood would not be detrimental to this neighborhood, especially on Stamper Road. And with that said, since the last zoning council meeting, I've took it upon myself to look at most all neighborhoods in our city limits, and the majority of these neighborhoods, from Haymont, Clairway, Briarwood, Glendale, on and on, Bordeaux, everywhere you look, there are apartments, there are duplexes and such. So to be a good citizen, and what we do propose to build there, we would definitely buffer it, and somebody in opposition made the statement that if it is two-story, that they could look down out of the windows on their house. So, you know, I've even spoke to my builder saying that on the left and right of the upstairs, we would not put windows looking out, and yet we would buffer it and plant, you know, green giants or bravitas on this property to buffer it, not only for the neighbors, but the two units that we would propose to build there. I think it is my opinion, being in real estate, that new construction can bring new life to an area, but on Stamper Road, where this unit is at, you know, I sure don't feel like one more door could change the complexity of this neighborhood. So today, we can build a house there, two-story, if we choose. And if the zoning, the current zoning on this is SF10, and we just met the density by a very small fraction, that we wouldn't, that I wouldn't be going through zoning, I might be going through the special use permit, so SF10 will, you can build a duplex on SF10 as it stands now, but since the lot was a tad short or density, we applied for SF6. But with the cost of this lot and everything we have to do, I think it would be in our best interest to favor the way we're looking at, or what we're looking at to build. If you have any questions, I'm open for any questions.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker in opposition is Ms. Elizabeth Vassar.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Testa Vassar. I live at 1924 Cherokee Drive. This property is literally in my backyard, my house you saw on this picture of the surrounding houses, the one to the south. That one's mine. I'm speaking in opposition to this rezoning to the SF6, because, one, the zoning was already denied by the zoning commission, and in his application, and then also in his speech, Mr. Evans said that SF6 is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood, but as y'all have already stated, the surrounding properties are all SF10. The original plan for the neighborhood was R10, which is now SF10, and SF6 goes against the original intent of the designers of Greenwood Homes. The lot may have been overlooked, as he said, but it's also dangerous. The, the location of that lot is at the crest of a hill, and so coming in and out of that, having it be a driveway would be really dangerous for people coming in and out, and if people who are living there would need to not have any street parking, because people come whizzing across, whizzing over there, because, like I said, I live on that corner, and people come whizzing down there and probably hit the cars. As far as the duplex, you know, a single-family would be better in our neighborhood, again, in keeping with the homes, and there are also no homes that are two-story in that area of our neighborhood, and so one story would also be in keeping. I know that's not part of the zoning. But most of the homes are not rentals in that, in our neighborhood. Most of our homes are owner-occupied. Most of our homes are owner-occupied, and the application also said that building on the lot would not affect wildlife, which clearly any building will affect wildlife. There are owls and birds and rabbits, possums, other wildlife that would need to find new homes, so. In general, I would like to, again, say I am opposed to a single-family six in my backyard and a duplex as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Barbara Newitz. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Newitz.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Newitz. I live at 1914 Mantio Street. I've lived in Greenwood Homes for 17 years. Three years ago, I spoke here. It's good to see some new faces. Mr. Hare used to be our city councilman.
Y'all got rid of him.
And then we got switched. Mr. Davis, now you have a face to the email. Tim Evans wants to rezone a property and build a duplex in our neighborhood, which is a same, which is a single-family residential neighborhood with a yard. This allows them to have privacy. This is why some people move into our neighborhood. Yes, it was designed in the 1950s to do that, to be that, and he also did the duplexes off of, I believe it's off of Rogers, but those were one-story duplexes. They were developed as that. This property that he is talking about is not overlooked. The very first owners on Mantio Street owned that piece of property, and that is why it had not been developed, and as years went by, other people owned it. Why a duplex? Why not a single-family home? In my opinion, it's all about profit. A duplex will be two stories with the main living area on the second floor. Now picture this, all windows will be on the side and back of the house. It will look down on three of the backyards on Mantio Street and two on Cherokee. No trees or bushes or fence will block it. They will lose their privacy. If any of you on the city council own property in the area, know it will become a rental. What does that mean? A turnover of residents, possibly every year. It, it also states two to four family. It is my belief that there will be more than one family in each unit. Who buys in our neighborhood? Police, teachers, respectable jobs. We have affordable housing for them in this neighborhood. A city for everyone, a can-do city. Please do not approve this request. Vote no to the duplex. Build a one-family home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Micheline Flynn. She's not here, okay, thank you. Alexei Shakrivas.
Good evening, sir. My name is Alexei Shakriv. I reside at 1923 Mantio Street. I speak against this development, and I would like the city members to follow the law. I'm going to read the law as I understand. NC General Statute, paragraph 1D-5, willful, wanton conduct means the conscious and intentional disregard and indifference to the rights and safety of others, which the defendant knows or should know is reasonably likely to result in injury, damage, or other harm. Why I read this law? From the end of 1040 property line to Mantio Street is 120 feet. As before me pointed out, the hill is very steep. A car traveling at 40 miles per hour, let's say 35 miles per hour, will pass 120 feet in less than two seconds. If a car sitting on Mantio Street making a left turn, there will be an accident, just a matter of time. And I agree with the lady before me, too, Barbara, who said it's all about profit. The petitioner knows he can build a duplex right now. He doesn't want it. He wants four-family dwelling. According to Fayetteville, the city of Fayetteville, there is 1.8 cars per family. Four families is 7.2 cars. There is no room to park those cars. Those cars will be parked on Stamper Road. The petitioner during the previous hearing himself said he cannot control where people park, but you guys can. You can prevent an accident. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Rick Bryant.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Rick Bryant. I live at 1803 Catalina Street. I was prepared to speak tonight to the placement of up to four dwelling units on this lot, which is a one-quarter acre lot, and from what I've heard from the, Mr. Evans, is that he is proposing now two dwelling units, so it kind of makes my point moot as far as the density goes, but I was prepared to say that four dwelling units on this lot, being one-quarter acre, if it were changed to a one-acre equivalent, would be 16 dwelling units per acre, and that exceeds the 15 dwelling units per acre, as stated in the 2010 Cumberland County Land Use Plan. The nearest access to a transit route is to be no more than one-quarter mile. This, again, by the Cumberland County 2010 Land Use Plan. The actual distance from this lot, if it were to be changed to medium-density residential SF-6, is going to be one-half mile. It'll be one-half mile regardless if it's changed or not, the physical distance, and one-half mile exceeds the quarter mile by a factor of two. There is a safety concern on Stamper Road. Stamper Road is used frequently, daily, as a cut-through from Bragg Boulevard over to Kane Road. There was a 2018, November 2018, traffic study done, which counted 2,200 vehicles going on Stamper Road for the double ADT, which is the average annual daily traffic. So cut that in half, say 1,100 vehicles going in either direction, from Bragg Boulevard to Kane Road or Kane Road back to Bragg Boulevard. As those vehicles come up the hill on Stamper Road, which is a substantial hill, they oftentimes are going in excess of the posted speed limit, which is 35 miles an hour. So those cars coming up the hill, get to the top of the hill there where Cherokee Road is, just past Cherokee is where the lot is at 1040 Stamper. Residents who would be making a right turn into the property, into the driveway off Stamper by, there is no driveway there now, would be coming to a near stop, and I guess, am I out of time?
No, you've got 30 seconds.
They would be coming to a near stop and one to five miles an hour to make that right turn into the driveway. So as they come to a near stop, cars coming from behind, or cars or trucks coming from behind, would be a high risk of a rear-end collision, and that's a safety hazard, and these are the reasons that I'm opposed to the change, proposed change from SF-10 to SF-6, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Garner.
Good evening, sir. So, my name is Stephen Garnier, sorry, but I own the property on 1905 Mantio Street and 1910 as well, and I have been living there since 2015. I moved there when my daughter was born, and thank you, Mayor, City Council, for listening to us. So, last time to answer your question, Mr. Hare, the zoning commission denied the request for multiple reasons, just earned everyone, and I think the main reason was a safety reason. This property will be located on top of the hill, so as you come out of Mantio Street, it will be very dangerous, and cars are driving faster than 35 miles an hour. It's additionally, Green Home is for a family residential home, and all the house were built in the 50s, so it will be on top of the hill. The only thing you will see is this stone house, will be like a visual pollution with only concrete, there will be no yard, and everybody wants a yard for the kids, for, to park your car. It will be an environmental issue as well, because on the, in our neighborhood, there is a lot of grass and trees, there will be no more wildlife, this lot will be empty. And in conclusion, when you park on Mantio Street, the long-term impact on neighborhood and safety, if a car is parked on the street, we know it will happen, that car parked on the street are most susceptible to break-in and being stolen, and that's what will happen. So thank you for listening, and please deny this request.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I have no further speakers. However, the applicant asked if he could return to the podium.
Who did? The applicant? Okay.
Mr. Tim.
All right.
I questioned Craig Harmon when I seen this, and you'll read on there where it says two to four-family dwelling. I said, Greg, why is that on there? And he said, Tim, that's in the verbiage of a duplex. So for clarification, we've already sent in our plot plan, we can only get two units on this piece of land. So all these safety issues I'm hearing on Stamper Road, is this going to change Stamper Road? I mean, if the traffic's there, here's what it boils down to, guys. We can build a house there tomorrow. If we put a duplex, we're adding one more door, and I can assure you of this, what we're putting there, and I think you guys would want to hear this, today, when I put the pencil to it, this project's going to cost us just a little over $350,000 to put that there, and I can assure anybody on this city council, it will be first-class, that's what I stand for. But, you know, it's sad. I mean, this is sad that, that, that lot's there, and what we know, and, and I would like to clarify this, and I'm not a betting person, but I would bet you Stamper Road is 90% rentals, and on the west side of Stamper Road, you have all duplexes, and with this lot facing Stamper Road, we're not in Greenwood, we're on Stamper Road, just like the other rentals, and I can assure all the, my opposition of this, it can be put in writing that we will put privacy fence, mature trees, and I've said this once, and I'll say it again, any large trees that border this property with the cost of clearing today, those trees will be left standing if they're on the border of this property. We will have no reason to take them out, but we're only talking about a quarter acre here, guys, and, you know, I'm a wildlife lover, but there's a lot of trees in Greenwood and a lot of places for wildlife besides this .25 acres. Thank you so much.
All right, that's it. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we have no further speakers.
All right. Did have a couple of questions here. I see Councilmember, Councilmember Davis was there with a question? Okay, so Councilmember Davis, well, Hare Davis, and then myself.
Thank you, Mayor. Could our planner come back up, please? And as I go through the docket here, and I appreciate what you said and what one of the speakers said, but I don't see what the zoning commission actually said, unless I'm overlooking, I just have here that that the zoning commission denied the rezoning request at their December meeting, and that the item was going to be brought to council for an appeal, as it is this evening. I wanted to see exactly what it was they said instead of what others said they said. Am I overlooking it?
No, I don't believe you are.
Ma'am?
No, I don't believe you are. The minutes are not typically included with the staff report.
Well, I think that's something we need to maybe start putting in, so we will know why it was denied by the commission. So once again, if you would, give me just a little bit more clarity on what their reasoning for denying it was.
Sure, so as many of the speakers have attested to, they have concerns regarding traffic, regarding the use type, which, as stated, is going to be a two-to-four-family dwelling. In this case, that lot would only sustain a duplex, a two-family dwelling, and again, only with this rezoning being approved would it be able to do that. The other concerns were potentially regarding crime and environmental concerns.
Thank you.
You said regarding crime?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
I'll, I'll wait to get to my question about that. All right, Councilmember Davis?
Yes, thank you. My question is actually for the applicant. Good evening, sir. I'm under the impression that you said you met with some of the residents in the neighborhood?
I met with the residents on Stamper Road across the street. Now, I will say this, I met with a resident, and I'd have to look at the lot, and I met with the gentleman there who's single, he's not in opposition, I did meet with him, and one of the ladies here tonight in opposition, and I hope she would say this, she works with PWC, but I went by her house countless times, and she told me she worked on Saturday, and I tried of an afternoon, I never could catch her at home to tell her what we was doing, but I think Mr. Hare mentioned about the minutes, and I would like to state this, and I was going to try to keep this as positive as possible, but one of the commission, zoning commission members that made the motion, if it's in the minutes, here's the statement that was made, which I felt like was totally unfair, that he was afraid that if this zoning went through SF-6, that it would open up the floodgate for more of this zoning in that area, and with only one lot left in this area, there's only one undeveloped lot left. I don't think that people's going to tear down their houses for duplexes, so I don't see how this could open up the floodgate, but I will share this, I think that comment had a direct effect on the motion he made, and I thought it was unfair, so I would like to state that. That's in the minutes, if the minutes were kept, that it would open up a floodgate.
Okay, so when you met with them, did they express their concerns to you? They did, correct?
They did not. The ones I met with did not. Matter of fact, the three I met with on Stamper Road right across, one lady said, Mr. Evans, I've lived here 10 years as a rental, and I just bought it, and the other two said, now, this is, this is people that would look directly at it on Stamper Road, and I had the guy with me. And I had the guy with me, that's my builder, and I said, here's what we're going to do here. And I heard no opposition from them, but now, I didn't get into the neighborhood. My only two people that I was concerned about is whose backyard backs up to this small lot, this lot's point two five. I did speak with the gentleman, if you're facing the lot, the street to the left, and the other ladies in here tonight with P W C, and I went to her house maybe four times to knock on the door to share with her what our proposal was, and I couldn't catch her at home.
So the first time you heard concerns were at the zoning commission?
At the zoning commission.
Okay, when you heard those concerns, uh, did you go back and make any adjustments to what you're trying to do? Did you, how did you address those concerns?
Well, I don't know how I can address those concerns, except I can state what we are willing to do to buffer the backyard. But I mean, we're, even if we build a house there, they kept taking, talking about the big yard. I mean, we can go in there and build the same footprint as the duplex. We can do that right now with the S F ten, the same footprint, okay? So we're talking about one more door or one more car, okay? I mean, really and truly, whew.
Thank you, sir. That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, um, so um, Mr. Tim? Yes, sir, go too far. So um, you know, just trying to understand it, and I, and I do probably have a question for one of the, those in opposition, it doesn't, doesn't matter which, but I heard several statements today being made about uh, this being a renter neighborhood. So what was the, what's the significance of that? Are these, are these, are these properties you're doing gonna be rentals or purchases?
Mr. Mayor, truthfully, at this point, here's what we did with the same product. We went to Roxy Avenue right below Hot Diggity Dogs. And we built the same quadplex. And we have nurses that bought. So when we built Roxy, we thought we were going to rent. So to be honest to this council and to my opposition, I can't give you a definite answer whether we'll sell these two townhouses, three-bedroom, two-bath, or whether we will rent them. I would say fifty-fifty, to be fair.
Right, I just know that it kept coming up as a reference that you said, uh, there was some high percentages of most of the people being there rented, so I was trying to get to the basis of that.
Stamper Road?
Uh, yeah, of the, the target area.
I tell you what I would like to do, and I have no problems tabling this for another month. If, if the planning board would like to look at Stamper Road and look at rentals versus people that own those properties, I think it'd be amazing, Stamper Road is predominantly rentals.
Okay, all right, all right, and, and uh, guess for the uh, opposition, it's had um, e- either one, uh, whoever wouldn't mind speaking, I just had a question, yeah, sure, sure. So as we talked about uh, this, and I look at it, so in and around the target area here are other houses, right? On each side of it?
On Stamper Road, one side is Greenwood Homes, on the other side is not Greenwood Homes. It is not, they are not part of our neighborhood.
Right.
And people do, there, I would say sixty percent is rental.
Well, well, I'm not going there, I'm, I'm, I'm finished with that. What I was trying to say is surrounding this parcel where he wants to build these, these, these units, to the north, south, east, and west of that are homes already, right?
Correct.
So when they're saying that wildlife was displaced, because I'm sure if wildlife was, is still there, that when they built those four homes around it, some wildlife got displaced, right? And they're saying that um, this is gonna create a catastrophic event for traffic, but there are already homes that are moving there, are there any accidents that you can think of that significantly have happened by the surrounding property, huh?
Yes, me.
You? Okay, oh, goodness, okay.
Someone ran a stop sign.
But that can, that can happen anyway, necessarily, right?
Well, it happened.
It happened there, okay.
It happened right on Stamper Road.
All right, any, any other incidents in and around this area that you were pointing to that you can remember?
There have been, but I really can't say, oh, well, this date, that date.
Gotcha, okay, all right, thank you. All right, uh, go to Councilmember Hondros and then Mayor Prote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, my question's for staff. Um, the S F six zoning, that will not allow in and of itself a duplex, would it?
That is correct, even with the S F six, they would need an approved special use permit.
Right, so whether this gets approved or not, it's still a single-family lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, I was just checking.
All right, Mayor Prote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think my question just got answered and um, by Councilmember Hondros. So what I was hearing from um, the gentleman was that even if this was approved or not, he could build a duplex there, is that incorrect?
Incorrect.
It is incorrect in that the lot is too small. In the single-family ten zoning district, they would need a total of fifteen thousand square feet of land for a duplex. Um, in the S F six, they would only need ten thousand square feet of land, and that lot is a little over ten thousand square feet.
So for the duplex was fifteen thousand and it's a little over ten?
Correct.
Okay, so then my next question is, um, so if he cannot build a duplex, he can build a single-family home?
Correct.
And he can build a single-family home, that's a two-story home or a three-story home?
The maximum height is thirty-five feet.
So not a builder, so help me out here, so that would be, that would be a two-story, correct?
Two stories, yes.
Is two, Councilmember Hondros, I, I, I thought I saw three hand, three, okay. So he could build the two-story home regardless?
Correct.
Um, okay, so the, the one thing that I do want to say in a situation like this, and I, I'm sitting in this chair right now because of a situation like this in my neighborhood. So I understand the passion and, and the unknown and everything like that. But I think the biggest mistake that my neighborhood made is they didn't sit down and, and talk the pros and the cons about everything, so um, that was my last statement. And I guess um, Councilmember Hondros um, figured it out for me, because I thought if we didn't pass it, he would be able to build it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green.
Mayor Prote, let him ask my question, so I'm good.
All right, council, any other questions, comments? Yes, sir.
I, I understand that you say that between the ten thousand and the fifteen thousand, but if the footprint of the project was smaller, okay, if he made a s- and tell me if I'm right or wrong, if he, if the, the builder decided he wants to make a smaller footprint for that lot, could he do the duplex?
No, the lot size is based on the number of units versus.
So you have to get an S U P?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. All right, uh, I saw the young man stand up, did you have something to add before we close the public hearing?
Thank you.
Come, come, come up here.
So in front of the zoning commission, uh, in, back in December, he mentioned, um, I forget his name, but he mentioned that he will rent for affordable homes seventeen hundred dollar a month. And that's when everybody said that's not affordable. So he already admitted last time it will be rental, I mean, I, I don't know if he changed, but it's what he said last time, that it will be rental.
Okay.
So I just wanted to.
Thank you, thank you for that. All right, council, any other comments, questions? All right, so what, that will close the public hearing, Councilmember Hondros, she had some action on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the map amendment to single-family residential S F six as presented based on the evidence submitted, uh, and find that the rezoning is consistent with the future land use plan as demonstrated by the attached consistency and reasonableness statements.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Councilmember Green. All right, yeah, discussion on the motion. And this motion is to approve the uh, rezoning. All right, see you in a, look to you for your votes, council. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries, six-four, those voting opposition, bene- took it down. Benevente here, as long as you have it, Benevente here, Justin Davis. All right, uh, now, item ten point O, just for those to understand, this is the special use permit part, which is also required for this, so the, this would only be relevant if, if the rezoning passed, so uh, go to Councilmember Davis, she had some direction on this.
Yes, sir, um, we will be, uh, I make a motion to table ten point zero one to March the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, thank you.
All right, motion to table this item ten point O one, which is the special use permit item, which has different criteria that uh, will be read at the time to the March twenty-fifth. Uh, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, is that a second? All right, council, any discussion on the motion to table? All right, look to you for your votes on that. All right, Madam Clerk, unanimous, uh, that item will be heard on March twenty-five. Uh, thank you to the residents, and we'll look forward to continuation of this and, and to the applicants and all that that came for that. All right, council, moving to item eight point O one, uh, Fayetteville Fire Department Fourth Quarter Report. How you doing, chief?
How you doing?
All right.
Mayor, council, um, thank you for allowing us to present the fire department report. For all those in attendance, my name is Moispy Alvarez, interim fire chief. I'll be followed by deputy fire chief Willett to my right, and assistant chief Rick Meyer. All right. So Fayetteville Fire Department continues to focus on their three main goals. Goal one, efficient, sustainable emergency service delivery. Goal two, sustain a high-performance organization through effective human resources. And goal three, to realize a prepared and resilient community. Those um, three goals are separated by the operations branch, the human resources branch, and the community preparedness branch. So in twenty twenty-three, this is just a quick look back from the top. Uh, we've implemented four new medications for our firefighters, Talenol, Buterol, Benadryl, and oral glucose. We've also developed lithium ion battery response and protocols. We replaced uh, two engines and a rescue, that's roughly about three million dollars. We ordered a replacement of truck seven, truck seven, and replacement of engine four. Truck seven's at Stacy Weaver, and engine four is um, uh, right there by Fayetteville Tech. That's roughly two million dollars. And through a grant to the Motiva facility, uh, we received their grant and purchased Indian Springs E R Care Rail Response, which is about a ten thousand dollar purchase, um, that will help train our hazardous materials train, uh, team on um, those responses. I will now turn it over to Chief Rick Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor, council manager. Uh, my name is David Rickmeyer, assistant chief, I'm gonna be covering our operations branch information on emergency response services. So in twenty twenty-three, we saw a slight increase in calls to just over twenty-eight thousand total calls for service or incidents. That year was sixty-two percent, so the bulk of those being EMS responses, and about fifteen percent being for fires. Uh, with those sixty-two percent of calls, we, we reached over about thirteen thousand patients were treated by Fayetteville firefighters. The top fire losses we saw last year, the top two were not structural related, uh, with one being the large timber fire that occurred on Shaw Mill Road at about one point eight million dollars in estimated damages, and the second being the Russell Street Bridge fire that occurred on Christmas Eve, uh, estimated about one million dollars in damages. The other three were structural related with the Jeffrey Drive apartment fire at eight hundred thousand, Weatherstone Drive apartment fire at almost six hundred thousand, and the Willowbrook Drive apartment fire at about four hundred thousand. Our response times are looking good this year, we're, we're at our benchmarks in, in almost all of our areas. Uh, and we measure from the time the nine-one-one call is taken to the time that our first unit gets on scene. So we're meeting our benchmarks with our alarm handling time, um, to our turnout time, which is the time it takes our, our truck to get in route once they're dispatched. And um, the travel time is the time they, they get in route to the time they get on scene for a total response time of just under seven minutes. In twenty twenty-three, um, our structure fire responses stayed about the same, uh, as well as thirty percent of those calls originating in the kitchen. Uh, we did suffer three civilian fire fatalities and thirty-three civilian fire injuries last year. We were able to um, confine the fire to the room of origin, which is one of our goals, uh, sixty-one percent of the time, and we did have a dollar save ratio of, of almost ninety-five percent. Um, we did have that um, total fire loss of about ten and a half a million, but again, two of those were the non-structural fire-related losses, large losses that, that are atypical to um, to what we experience. On the EMS side, um, our total EMS responses increased just slightly to eighteen thousand seven hundred. Overdose responses were actually down to five hundred and sixteen this year. But we did, we administered naloxone and Narcan approximately the same as in years past. And we had one, four hundred and forty-one cardiac arrest responses with only eleven measured saves. But I want to note that we changed the way we measure our cardiac arrest saves this past year. We used to measure them as pulse on transfer to EMS. And now, in order to align with how Kefir Valley measures their responses, uh, we now um, measure or, or consider a save is pulse on discharge from the hospital. So that's why you see the big difference in the amount of saves compared to years past. In the hazardous materials world, uh, our total responses were up to about four hundred and fifty-three this past year, with the um, the bulk of those being natural gas releases. And we're, we're seeing a rise in those simply because of the amount of underground boring and utility construction in Fayetteville, with most of that was, those being the, the fiber installation. We'll turn it over to deputy chief Willett.
And good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ronnie Willett, deputy fire chief for Human Resources. So last year, we were busy, uh, we recorded over a hundred and forty-four thousand training hours. Keep in mind, we are an all-hazard department, so that does indicate that we touched on almost every uh, possible credential, uh, to include firefighter credentials, like we had twenty-nine new firefighters were certified last year. Uh, fifty-seven E M Ts to include recertification of our emergency medical technicians occurred. Our programs, our special operations programs, are also provide us support in that we've provided fourteen new rescue technician certifications, twelve driver op, driver operator certifications, and fourteen hazmat technician certifications. Each one of those is specific to one of the programs that we offer within the fire fire department. On average, you can see in the chart above, we have, every firefighter recorded about three hundred and eighty-eight hours of training per person. The current state of the department, we, we are authorized three hundred and fifty-one full-time employees, we currently have around three hundred and thirty-five. However, something that was not captured in this report, we are experiencing uh, a significant uptick in um, rehires, individuals wishing to come back to the department, so that's a good thing. Uh, we did add, sir? Absolutely, uh, we did add a deputy fire marshal position last year. This is a captain level position to assist with our code enforcement and risk reduction initiatives. Last year, we hired thirty-three firefighters and uh, a tip of the cap to our lateral entry hire program is showing us work, and seven of those firefighters we hired last year were fully certified and ready to go to work. So our lateral entry program is working. As councils aware, in two thousand seventeen, we started with the diversity, equity, and inclusivity initiatives within the department specifically with regard to our recruiting. As you can see these charts, we are still trending in the right direction. Last year, uh, we recorded uh, twenty-three point seven eight percent of our, our recruitment efforts to underrepresented populations. And also forty-two percent of our recruits were from underrepresented populations, so. our recruitment efforts and our targeted marketing is effective. They're still showing progress, so that's something we're proud of. Organizationally, our recruitment efforts are also showing within our ranks. Uh, this year, we represented tw, twenty three point six five percent of our department is represented by underrepresented populations, so our, our overall organizational diversity is also continuing to improve. We took a dip, however, in the number of hires this year, um, from underrepresented populations. However, we do expect that to, to correct itself in, in the upcoming hire. Rates of attrition are also showing a little improvement for this year as compared to last. Uh, the average rate of service has gone up to about ten point one two years per individual once they, upon their separation, and their annual rate of attrition has dropped to twelve percent, twelve point two five percent. So, or what we would like to see is the blue line above the orange. So we take every opportunity we can to celebrate the achievements of our, of our folks, and, uh, last year, we were able to do that. We had thirty three firefighters progress through our career development program. Uh, this includes promotions of fourteen fire lieutenants, eleven fire captains, and two battalion chiefs. We had ten service retirements to include our fire chief, Michael Hill. And also, we, uh, we take every opportunity once again to recognize the efforts of those who go above and beyond. We issued six gold life-saving awards, one silver life-saving award, seven unit citations, one letter of commendation, and five of the year awards. Those include fire officer, firefighter, hazmat technician, and so forth. And a special thank you to those who came out to our most recent award ceremony. Thank you for being there. Your support's important. And barring any questions related to human resources, I'll turn this back over to Chief Alvarez.
Got you. All right, so they have a couple of questions, gen, gentleman. Uh, Councilmember Hammond been asking this the whole time. She had a little question.
Yes, sir.
All right, and then Councilmember Thompson.
Uh, thanks, chiefs. Uh, and this is a, a very good presentation, uh, these, these two that we're getting now. Um, I happen to, my, my mom lives right in the back of the E Smith, and I saw some of the young, I guess they were some of our young, uh, class or the fire science. I just wanted to know how, how was that progressing? I happened to see them with the, the jackets on and their boots, and I guess they must have had some training or something, but how, how have we been, been doing with that project?
Yes, sir, the E Smith Fire Academy.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we do remain abreast of the developments in that program, and we are partnered with Fayetteville Technical Community College and Cumberland County Schools in support of that program, and we do offer support to, uh, to the Fire Academy, you know, upon request. Um, I will say that we have had interactions with candidates, uh, in our hiring process that have come from that program. We actually have employees now on board that were graduates of that program. Um, so to get back to your, your question, uh, we do engage with them every opportunity we have, and we look forward to more engagement in the future with the E Smith Fire Program.
Okay, thank you. And my, my follow-up is, I don't know if this is for you or for the police, but I know that we've had several fires that have been put out over the months to maybe a year or so within the Merkison Road Corridor. Uh, any update on that? Is that an update? Will come from our, uh, Police Department?
Many of those incidents, excuse me, many of those incidents you speak of are still under investigation, so we would defer any, um, information to come from the Police Department for that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief, and thank you for a great, a award ceremony that, uh, myself and Councilmember Davis and Hun, and, uh, uh, Mario attended. Uh, I never knew the importance of a lot of these, uh, I guess, uh, asterisks you have hi, behind these recognitions, and I don't know if this is a question for you or the chief or even the city manager, but we see across the nation all the time life-saving examples of our heroes, whether it's a plane landing on a, a busy street or whether somebody pulling a civilian out of a car or something. And I don't know about my other two fellow council members, but one of the, uh, awards that you presented, I think it was last Friday, was the life-saving of the infant on how she persistently, or was it he or she, she persistently did CBR, CPR until the individual was breathing again and used to, it got kind of emotional. I'm pretty sure the entire audience felt the same way because you could hear a pen drop. So my question is, Mr. Manager, and I know this is a, I think it was six of them, how do we recognize those individuals on a platform at City Hall and not an award ceremony that nobody sees? Because nobody from marketing was there, so I don't know how we recognize these individuals publicly.
The, um, through the award ceremony they have, but also I think the, um, uh, chamber.
Let me stand corrected first. Marketing was there. I apologize. She did take photos and stuff.
Right.
Let me make sure I'm correct first.
Well, I'm, I'm sure Lauren was about to jump out of his seat and come correct, uh, grab the microphone, but the, um, uh, the chamber, um, also does, um, some group does, um, public safety awards, um, as well where those things are recognized. But to your point, I think that anything that we can do to highlight that particularly, um, for the public in this forum, we can do as well. And so now that we have the awards, um, um, identified, um, and recognized, I would welcome, if council so permits, for us to maybe invite all of the award recipients to come, at least be presented at the beginning of a meeting during recognitions and, and announcements.
But let me just add, Mr. Manager, during our strategic plan, we talked about we need to market who we are, but we also need to market the individuals that are doing great things, that propel who we are. Thank you, sir. Thank you, chief.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have just two questions. Um, you had said that it takes seven minutes of travel time, so if you call nine one one, the Fire Department gets to you in seven minutes. That's the average, correct?
That is correct. That's, we do that ninety percent of the time.
Okay, and that's why we have such a great rating, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and it's, how many in the nation have this rating?
Don't get me to lie. Um,
Not many, not many. We're, we're a very high percentage.
Correct.
It's an A rating, correct?
Uh, well, it's, uh, we have a Class One ISO rating.
Right.
And, uh, we're also in a CIPSE accredited agency, which is about, uh, two hands full in the state of North Carolina. Um, our partnering municipalities are also accredited, um, but we're constantly challenging each other.
So I just want everybody to remember that seven minutes, that is very impressive, especially when you're waiting for you to come. So the second thing that I heard that I want to make sure that everybody, you said, um, somebody's having a heart attack, and you had four hundred and forty one calls. Is that kind of what I heard? Did, who was, who gave that? Was it you? Was, am I correct on that? And
Yes, ma'am.
What was the, um, life-saving of that?
That was, um, cardiac arrest saves was eleven upon discharge from K, from the hospital.
Okay, so when, when you say that, the four hundred and forty one, it wasn't just eleven that survived it?
Um, correct, and the reason behind that number, um, it could be a, an overdose.
Right.
That they're in cardiac arrest, and we administer Narcan, and they come back.
Okay.
So we were dispatched as a, a cardiac arrest, but the end result was them breathing. So, um, the number of cardiac arrest saves is that when we, uh, transport an individual to the hospital.
Right.
They're still in cardiac arrest.
Correct.
That's the difference.
Got it. So I just want everybody to make, I just wanted to make that point, that seven minutes is a really great time, that y'all are doing such a good job to get to us. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I have just a few more slides, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That's all right. Um, so our last, um, community preparedness is our last division that we'll talk about this evening. Um, so we're looking at, uh, we're making good strides with, uh, over a thousand smoke alarms and over two hundred, um, carbon monoxide alarms installed this past year. Uh, we've held nearly eleven hundred outreach events, and that's touching almost thirty eight thousand citizens. So we're up sixty percent from the previous year. So we also held forty seven hands-only CPR events, um, trained over a thousand residents. Our fire inspections, as annotated earlier in one of the earlier slides, we were down a fire inspector, so some of the numbers you might see are a little low. Fire inspections completed on-site were six thousand six hundred and forty six, and the incendiary structure fires are down to thirty four. Top five code violations is the fire protection system, and last time I was up here, I promised you that we were working on a mitigation strategy for that, and we hope to launch that in twenty twenty four to bring that number down in twenty twenty five. So community preparedness, emergency management. So we were busy in that field as well. Um, as you all know, we, uh, Mr. Scott Bullard, um, left us, so, uh, we still maintain busy. So we held the City of Fayetteville Active Threat Exercise, tornado drills, Fayetteville Airport Annual Tabletop, so on and so forth, up and down to disaster debris exercise here in City Hall. So we're still being, uh, we're still busy. Security, yes, we do that too. So City Act, uh, Access Control Expansion, we're ninety percent complete with that project in twenty twenty three. It was implemented and ninety percent complete in twenty twenty three. We did a hundred percent of the upgrades, um, completed in twenty twenty three, and we also accomplished four hundred and twenty three validation and verification for employee access requests. Our vendor management, um, goal, uh, we implemented enhanced security at the Day Resource Center. There was four incidents, um, through our security management that we referred to law enforcement for further follow-up. We also, um, uh, two hundred and sixty nine contraband items were stopped, um, from entry by security officers up front here at City Hall. The Day Resource Center, um, security and staff have been trained in active shooter, CPR, Narcan administration, and stop the bleed, and that was done in partnership with our Kefir Valley Hospital Systems and Fayetteville PD. So, um, I'll end the, the presentation with this, um, now live for twenty twenty four. Um, we promised you a dashboard where you can actively, actively look at your council districts, incidents in your council districts, smoke alarm installations in your council districts, as well as a live feed for our response times, and, um, call types as well as call numbers. So you'll have the most up-to-date data. This resource is open to the public. It's, um, under our website, Fayetteville Fire, back, excuse me, Fayetteville NC dot gov backslash fire, resources, then fire statistics, as you see on your screens there. If you scroll down, those are our active times, so we monitor those times internally daily to make sure we don't stray. If it keeps going down, that's where you'll see the past seven event types, incidents by hour, as well as an up-to-date calendar total and, uh, daily total. That is brand new, fresh off the press, um, for council members and the general public. If you want to see your district, you just simply click on the hamburger that I'm illustrating right in here. Just click on that, and you can turn on your city council, as well as how are we doing our smoke alarm canvassing? So I'll definitely let you digest that for the next meeting. So any further questions?
I think that's it. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the good work you're doing. Uh, thank you for keeping our community safe.
Thank you.
Chief Brayden. Sir, oh, yeah. All right. So we do need official action to receive the report. Uh, so, uh, as a motion by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, is that what you pressed it for? All right, and second about Councilmember Hodros? All right, discussion on the motion to receive the report. All right, those in favor, uh, let's look at your votes, council. All right, who, who we missing? Is Councilmember Benevente down there messing off? All right. All right, thank you. Chief Brayden, it's on you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Here tonight to do the presentation for our year review for January through December twenty twenty three. Once again, we'll review some crime statistics, crime trends, crime fighting strategies, and our community engagement for the year. And we start with the first slide. As you can see, we'd be discussing, it's the same as I presented in all four quarters for twenty twenty three. Uh, all the ass, uh, all the individual areas are in green, indicating those are positive movements. Our persons crimes are down for the year. Our property crimes are down for the year. Our total felony arrests are up for the year, and our total misdemeanor arrests are up for the year. Uh, remember, the explanation I give to this is total crime, when crime is coming down, and we're arresting and solving cases is going up, that is a positive movement for me as a police chief to see what's going on in our community. I get concerned when those, those numbers start to, to diverge. If crime is going up and our solvability, our arrest rates are going down, that means that there's a problem that needs to be fixed. Uh, some other interesting facts on this slide. Uh, the persons crimes, they're down by over two hundred and seventy six incidents for the entire year. That's not quite one a day, but, you know, uh, that's a pretty significant number when it comes to persons crimes. Property crimes were down by one thousand two hundred and ninety seven. Okay, with three hundred something days in a year, that's almost a little under, uh, little over three a day. Five hundred and fifteen additional felony arrests this year and one thousand one hundred and twenty five additional misdemeanor arrests for the year. The proactive approach that the officers, and we're asking our officers to go out and do every day, uh, they've increased, traffic stops were up fifty three percent compared to twenty twenty, uh, two. Crimes against society, those are the, the, the drugs, the guns, the prostitutes, anything where the state of North Carolina would be the victim, they're up by sixty two percent in twenty twenty three, and our criminal apprehensions were up by thirty two percent across the board for twenty twenty three. For a little, a matter of perspective, I, I went back, uh, as far as I could to, to track crime stats to show the trend lines for where we've come. Uh, if you look back in two thousand and sixteen, uh, this was, uh, total crime was at a seven-year low compared to two thousand and sixteen. This is all crime, property, and persons combined. Uh, you look at nineteen thousand three hundred and forty five in two thousand and sixteen to fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty five, that's roughly just a little bit over four thousand incidents in a year that were down across the board. We break that out into individual crimes, our violent crime. Twenty twenty three violent crime is at a seven-year low. Homicide incidents have been on the rise for the past three years. Our homicide unit maintains more than ninety percent clearance rate. We've noticed that drug robberies, gang activity, and retaliation shootings account for most of our aggravated assaults. So I didn't just put the seven-year crime trend for violent crime, but also put the homicide data individually so you can see that, how that has come, how that has gone since two thousand and eighteen. Property crimes in twenty twenty three, property crimes continue to trend down. Motor vehicle thefts have been the greatest increase in property crimes across our city for the past two years. We had just under seven hundred motor vehicle larcenies last year in twenty twenty three. We'll talk about that a little later in the, uh, report. Robbery, which is listed in neighbors as a property crime, is trending up, and juvenile incidents for motor vehicle theft, robbery, motor vehicle breaking and entering are all trending upward. We'll speak about those individually in our, our juvenile slide. So our crimes against persons, as you look, I, I said crimes against persons was down for the year. The only thing that is trending up on those major categories is homicide. We had a total of fifty two incidents with fifty three victims for last year. Our rape, aggravated assault, which includes all the shooting incidents, all other persons crimes, and total person crimes are down for the year twenty twenty three. We took a, uh, took a look at death investigations by type. Homicides were up. Uh, overdoses trending with, with the Fire Department, just the information they just gave are trending down for us. Uh, I, the proliferation of Narcan within our community, I think, has a great deal to do with that. Uh, suicides are trending up. I was asked last report to have the gun breakout. Uh, there were thirty nine firearms used in homicides this, uh, in twenty twenty three, and there were total twenty six suicides by weapon in twenty twenty three. A little closer look at the homicide incidents for all of the year. There were fifty two total incidents of homicide reported in twenty twenty three. Our unit has a ninety two point five clearance rate for the incidents in twenty twenty three. There were several that came in in, in the month of December. There was at least three that came in in the month of December that are, are, are close to being closed out as we start twenty twenty four. Crimes committed, uh, well, seventy five percent of the incidents involve the use of a firearm. Nine of our victims were juveniles, and four of the suspects that we charged with murder were juveniles in twenty twenty three. I mapped out all the homicides for the year across the city. Uh, the, the circle you'll see on the, the series of maps that come out throughout this presentation, that is that Merkison Road Corridor. Uh, this is mapped out, uh, because seventeen of the fifty two incidents of homicide occurred within the Merkison Road Corridor in that circle. That's thirty three percent of all the homicides in the city, uh, That's thirty-three percent of all the homicides in the city occurred at that location. Like I said, I wanted to take a look at if that's the leading area in our city that we have homicides. Does it match up with the other aspects of crime as we see them within our community?
Which is what I was gonna ask. So, you've got the same area highlighted on these other slides?
Correct.
And you're trying to do what, a comparison?
Correct.
But some of the areas is not the highest generator of?
No, but, but like I said, when we took our, when we looked at, why did we play ShotSpotter? Where we play ShotSpotter? There were things that we looked at and actually led us to the road of this is where the ShotSpotter needed to go. As we look at the Merkison Choice neighborhoods, that we're looking, the things that we're wanting to accomplish within that Merkison Road corridor, I think it's key to look at the crime in general in that area.
All right, let's get a couple more slides, and then we'll, I'll recognize a few questions, Chief.
Aggravated assaults, there were one thousand eight incidents of aggravated assault reported in 2023, but the total of one thousand six hundred and twenty-six victims indicates that numerous incidents resulted multiple victims. So, when someone's getting assaulted, it's not just one person getting assaulted by one suspect. We have a thousand eight incidents with over sixteen hundred actual true victims. And again, just showing, so for consistency within that mapped area, that is an area within that Merkison Road. Some of our most, some of the big incidents that occurred in 2023, the vehicle ended up in the pool over at Seabrook Park, you know, that's the corridor that we're looking at.
All right, so I'm gonna stop for Councilman Mair, and they have a question on that statistic, right?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Well, first, if we go all the way back to that very, very first, because I have one about this, about the one that's on the screen now, but if we go all the way back to you, to the very beginning slides, and you were telling us all the things that were going down, and you were saying some of the reasons why you think those numbers were going down. I did not hear anything in there about the citizen input, because that's always a big thing for me when I, at my meetings about suspicious calls, nine-one-one calls that folks are putting out there, and I didn't see that as a part of the statistic. What's the major role that's, that, that our residents are paying for those numbers to look like they are? I mean, are they doing more nine-one-one calls? So, making suspicious, you know, someone suspicious? I mean, those, you said what the police were doing.
Yes.
But I was wondering, you didn't say anything about the area that the residents are playing, because they have to play a role in order for you to be able, you're not catching everything on ShotSpotter and on and on and on.
So, and I've been to many community watch meetings with you, Councilman Mair. That is one of the things that we truly push is, if you know, is there something suspicious or they are unsure of to call nine-one-one, so we can have someone that can respond and take a look at that? Urging them to do that, you know, has led to different crimes being solved or suspicious activity being investigated that potentially has led to an arrest or a deterrence of a crime within those communities. I don't have a specific statistic that can back that number up, but I will highlight, later on, I have a slide with a number of calls for service that highlights our nine-one-one center and the amount of work that they go through. The number of calls for services is just a tremendous amount. We didn't really capture that, that statistic last year. It's something I wanted to incorporate back into our quarterly report. So, we will have some comparison data as we move forward in 2024 with our calls for service, whether they're up, down, and what kind of types of calls those are.
And that's what I'm asking for, and I'm glad to hear that you're, you're gonna start doing that, because that's a number-one thing, one of the number ones that we do, are we're pushing that our residents play a role in, well, you just said that you're gonna change that. On your January dash, December, 2023, the ones where you had all of the activity with the circle, the very first one, and you, of course, you showed the part of the Merkison Road corridor.
The homicide slide.
With the very first one, I don't know if I can just kind of show you. This is the one I'm looking at. Yeah, 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 that's the one. So, tell me, when I see a statistic like that, what additional are we doing to cut that down?
So, I think, and the reason I highlighted that is, you know, it wasn't just what the police are doing. I think the initiatives that you as a council have put forward with that Merkison Choice initiative through that area, the different things that you've done throughout the years to rebrand and rebuild Merkison Road, to addition to the crime-focused strategies that the police department has had. You know, we had our safe space to play for juvenile, for kids at Seabrook Park. We had the Stop the Bleed events at Seabrook Park. We know our pow camp is right there on Slater Avenue at Seabrook Park. But, but it also shows that we had a lot of interest in, a lot of shootings that were related that very well could have been homicides, as we look progress through the slides, and we show the aggravated assaults and the robberies that occurred within that area as well. The thing that drew my attention to actually circle that is the fact that that was that concentration, a third of our homicides occurred within that, that one corridor.
Yeah, yeah, and what my question was, so what is it that we are increasing in to keep the number or bring the numbers down? What are we, is there anything that we can say specifically that we're doing within that, these areas that you're gonna show us throughout with the circles that we're doing to help keep the, bring the numbers down?
Yes, the initiatives that we have, the only thing I could do is try to educate the community on on what not to do or what to look for. You know, when we talk about the safe space to play, it's us out there talking with the kids, trying to tell them, you know, not to get involved with that gang activity, not involved in guns. The Stop the Bleed event was, you know, a partnership with the fire department, the hospitals, and other nonprofits within the area to get there and show what it's, what it's like to go through a shooting incident from the initial nine-one-one call all the way to that emergency room visit. And I don't like calling it scared straight, but it's to show you what happens in these critical incidents. So, hopefully, people see what the, what the outcomes of their actions could lead to. So, it's things like that that we do try to have that positive impact within those areas. But realistically, when I have a homicide, the only thing we can do is go out and try to solve that as best that we can, to investigate it fully and actually identify who actually committed that homicide.
Thank you, Chief, thanks. So, Chief, going back to the same diagram here. So, one of the things that kind of used to always get to me was that Merkison Road got looped into everything, right? That right here, I know you're saying it's in and around the corridor, but you see how wide it is? This covers everywhere from parts of Ramsey Street to the north of, to where Warrenwood School, I guess that's the Warrenwood off Rosehill Road, is that what that's indicating?
Yes.
I mean, so Merkison Road is not that big. So, how do you get a statistic that's more reflective of it? Because that's how the rebranding starts. There were about nine hundred times that Merkison Road was mentioned in a negative way in the newspaper for a two-year period, right? And so, you're trying to rebrand it on one hand, but then we're drawing this big, wide net that you could probably draw a circle that wide around the next page and come up with a different statistic, you know? So, one, how are we saying what's related to the corridor? How do we, how do we classify that? Is it a mile, is it two miles, or ten miles? Or do we apply that around to every single other area? That's, that's my question.
So, as we took a look here, as you go down Merkison Road, yes, there are some that stretch, cut over towards that Warrenwood. But if you take a look at our greatest concentration, starting from the downtown, you know, we had the ones that occurred on that lower end of Merkison Road, the ones that are off through there, again.
Because four-one business, what is that, Martin Luther King?
Where are we at?
At the very bottom where you were talking about, that's the southern end. So, those three right there by four-one business, that's MLK. MLK doesn't touch Merkison Road.
And again, that, remember, I said, these are the areas that we've had our programs in, our ShotSpotter, our ShotSpotter covers into that downtown area as well.
Tomorrow's newspaper article is gonna say Merkison Road has the highest concentration of crime, and that's not, that's not the case. Because you've got MLK, you've got Ramsey Street, you've got Rosehill Road, you've got other areas that are not necessarily Merkison Road. So, it's gonna be hard to say we're trying to ask for additional investment and rebranding and all of this stuff that the city's trying to do. If we don't change the way we're representing it, this stat is wider, looking through a wider lens than, than any other concentrated area that I can see on here. Merkison Road is Merkison Road, starts at one end and it stops at another end.
So. All right, and like I said, when we look at these investigations, this is the corridor of the individuals who live within those areas and the retaliatory stuff that we're seeing.
Again, MLK doesn't touch it, you know, Ramsey Street, and it are connected by one street, which is where Fayetteville State is. So, we need a little bit more. Mr. Kirby, I hope you're writing pretty accurate back there. So, I'm just, just wanna make sure that we're comparing apples and apples, okay? And, but, but that was, that was one of the questions I had. Now, on the next slide that you had where the ag assaults, what percentage does that represent? You told me on the homicides, but I see higher concentration areas out toward the western part of the city, to the left of that. So, what percentage does this circle, this area that you've corridoring off represent out of the total? Did you have it broken down like you did the homicides? Homicide, you said thirty-three percent.
We're looking over, over, there's over a thousand actual total incidents of the actual aggravated assault. And it, those dots stand on top of each other in a lot of those cases. A heat density map would probably be what you're looking for to see where the concentration sits.
Well, what I wanna see is that you broke the other one out by percentage with the same dots and the same issues and factors that you just said. So, if you broke this out by dots, what is the percentage of that? Your computer can't tell you that of this, this area that you're targeting here? So, what, when you highlighted this, what was the information that you were looking to extract from here?
To show that the overlapping of the crimes that occur within those areas. Again, those are a lot of our retaliatory shootings, those are the ones that we investigated. Those are where we have our identified Slater Avenue, where we had multiple shootouts back and forth over the summer that we responded out to and had to investigate. We had people who lived right over there off Rosehill Road. I know it's not directly on Merkison Road, but it's directly around the corner. So, you know, showing there's a.
So, how, how do you, how do you do that, though? How do you go all the way to Warrenwood and say it's around the corner from Merkison Road? Like, I, I don't, I don't understand that. And so, so what is, what is the criteria that we use? Is it a half of our radius from a certain area? What is the criteria we're using here? Because that's, that's the part I'm not understanding. Warrenwood is not around the corner from Merkison Road. I mean, everything is around the corner from everything if you look at it like that. Hay Street is around the corner from Merkison Road if you look at it like that.
I think, Mayor, to your point, and this is, I think, is a, it's a very good one. Words matter. And so, if we were just to say this is not Merkison Road corridor, but we would just say this is a corridor.
Yeah, or Hamilton District or something like that. You know, which district is this?
But one of the things, Mayor, that makes this unique is that consistent with the work that we're doing with the cost of gun violence study that is on the street. Jeff, is that correct? Yeah. And I think that these areas track on it. Also, as the chief said, these are the areas, regardless of what we call them, but we don't want to call it the Merkison Corridor, because it is a much larger area, as you said. This is also where we are seeing, this is one of three areas that we have identified that were shot spotted, where we have a lot of violence. But to your point, we need to be very careful about not labeling something just because it is the Merkison Road corridor. It is a district, and off of which Merkison is one of the main roads. I think we, we get that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Chief. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I was looking at your slide of homicides and traffic accidents. I think you said homicides was fifty-two and traffic accidents is twenty-six. That's about half.
So, so there are two different slides. You're talking about a slide that's coming forward, the fatality for traffic accidents.
Am I getting ahead of myself?
Yes, there's about twenty-six, I believe, is the number for this year.
Well, I asked a question anyway. I was concerned about that a couple of months ago, and that's why I contacted you and a city manager to see what we can do to do some type of campaign to reduce the traffic accidents and the speeding. A lot of these council members, as, let me just say, when I go to a lot of my community watch meetings, all of my residents' biggest concern is speeding. I brought a couple of instances up to Captain Strape, who I believe is in the back room, back of the room back there. And I'm glad you guys started the campaign, because you guys are getting kudos, whether it's on Facebook or whether it's on Nextdoor, about how traffic infractions have increased and speeding has slowed. So, my question is, do you have the numbers? Because under my recollection, we haven't had any fatalities in the first two months of this year. Correct me if I'm wrong.
One. Oh, you're talking about wrecks, accidents?
No, fatalities.
Well, unfortunately, we're out on one right now as we speak.
But, perfect timing, huh?
But we are, yes. And I'll get that a little later when I have to go over the traffic stop reports. You know, there's a misconception that we don't stop cars. I think in the slides that are further down in the presentation, you'll see that we do actually stop quite a few cars. We do take quite a few enforcement actions for speeding violations, and I'll break all that down in those later, later slides for you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, so we're left off on the robberies. Two hundred and sixty-four incidents of robbery reported in 2023. Three hundred and eighty suspects indicates that many robberies involve more than one suspect. Three hundred and eighty-nine victims indicates that many robberies involve more than one victim. So, it's not one of those where we have one person robbing one other person. What we find is in most of our robberies, it's group, group robberies, a group of individuals, or there's a group of individuals who've been victimized by someone committing an act of robbery. So, the first full quarter of ShotSpotter took place during the fourth quarter of 2023. It actually went live September twenty-ninth. As we look at the key indicate, the key events, there were a total of two hundred and ten events with six hundred and fifty-six rounds fired within the entire city. Hamilton District accounts for thirty-seven percent of all, with seventy-eight total and two hundred and ninety-two rounds fired. There are five guns recovered based on events that we were dispatched to by ShotSpotter, and there's at least eight arrests based on homicide events recorded by ShotSpotter. So, that means we have eight events of homicide that were caught on ShotSpotter that we were made aware of. As we deal with violent crime, our federal partnerships, we continue to work with that VICAP, the Violent Criminal Apprehensions. For the quarter, there were fifteen individuals federally sentenced, seventeen indicted, over ninety-five thousand seized dollars, twenty-eight firearms were taken off the street, and we continue to work with the U.S. Attorney's Office with that Violent Criminal Crime Action Plan to remove those violent criminals. Talking about domestic violence, as you remember, we sort of reapproached how we were gonna deal with domestic violence last year in 2022. We saw that a quarter of our homicides were related to domestic-related events. And Ms. Gertes is here to talk about how she supports us in the follow-up with a lot of those victims. But we've shown a decrease in the number of misdemeanor domestic violence incidents, down twenty-six percent. Our felonies are up thirteen, but that can be spoken to as our officers continue to push forward and take cases down before the magistrate, instead of always asking for the victims to go down and get their PC beforehand. If we are able to establish the felony charges, we're working through that and actually going and making those charges as often as we can. We dedicated two detectives back to our domestic violence investigations to help officers work through some of these felony charges for those events. Like I said, I'll just let Ms. Gertes speak about her rape crisis in the Phoenix Center, what they're doing to assist us with follow-ups through our domestic violence.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Hewitt. I don't know how to push this slide. So, just to recap. No, I don't know how to go back now. But anyway, last March, Chief Braden asked us to look at domestic violence just a little bit differently. What could we do to help address it? So, we started calling all the domestic violence calls for service that the Fayetteville Police Department has. And can I get back to that last slide? I am so sorry, Chief. So, this is October through December. We had a total of five hundred and fourteen referrals. Out of those, we were able to make contact with two hundred and ninety-seven victims. There's a variety of reasons why we didn't make contact with the others. Different phone numbers, left voicemails, and they just didn't call back. Got it. We have three advocates that make these phone calls. We get a list every Monday and every Thursday. We pick up the phone. Our agreement is that we'll call within twenty-four hours, and we call these victims, and we offer them services, not just from us, but within Fayetteville, Cumberland County, the state, or wherever they reside. Our goal is to truly break the cycle. Again, this Again, this is, um, other services that we offered them, a hundred and forty-three, uh, and this is the last quarter. We provided safety planning, that's how to safely leave, maybe not tonight, maybe next week, but maybe next month. But let's start that conversation and get them ready for, for them to leave. Leaving is the most dangerous time for a victim. Uh, we went to court with twenty-one victims. It's a very scary place if you've never been. We made sixteen referrals to Legal Aid, um, nights of housing. Um, that's the hotel program we're using. We just started that in November. Um, and then seventeen DVPOs were done in our office with Cumberland County Courthouse. Um, and then fa- fifty-eight victims were revictimised. They were on our list more than once. Um, when that happens, we call a detective at the DV unit, um, and talk to them about the case, what's going on? What can we do? What kind of charges are out there? And so this wraps up. Again, uh, we started the beginning of March. We had seventeen sixty-nine total referrals. Um, I think the most important number of, of course, is that, um, making those amount of calls. Um, but we're seeing almost two hundred victims were victims more than once of domestic violence. Um, when we see that situations are escalating or that they're on the list more than once, uh, we meet with, uh, the DV detectives. And then monthly, we do a, a case review where, um, uh, the sergeant and lieutenant come as well. So that's a total of, uh, what two thousand and twenty-three looked like for us. Do y'all have any questions?
Councilor here.
You know, what I want to do is really give you guys a thumbs up. And the reason why, I remember maybe fifteen, sixteen years ago, we had a young lady would come up often about rape and domestic violence, which we didn't have a big part of that within our police department. She kept coming, she kept coming. I don't know if she's here, I don't, I can't even remember her name, but she kept coming because of those concerns. And where we are now and where we were then, we've come a long ways. So I give, uh, of course, you all a thumbs up, the councils that have supported it over the years, that we've come a long ways and, and keep doing what you're doing with this right here. I know that, um, our citizens appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, how long have you been, uh, working with the chief with this new strategy?
Uh, we started, he came to us in February of last year and we implemented in March.
So Chief, as you broke down the homicides, did our DVs go up or down for that? I know the, the felony assaults went up because of reporting of what it was.
Uh, as far as, no, there wasn't as many domestic-related homicides this year as there was last year. We did have, uh, quite a few, uh, uh, infant death investigations that we did for this year, though.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see, oh, Councilmember Hodros has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to echo kind of your concerns. I was just looking, so on page sixteen, we have a graph of the three districts. And it'd be helpful to have a map of those districts. Um, but looking at the maps on page, uh, eleven thirteen and fifteen, or slide rather, eleven thirteen and fifteen, that circled area, kind of an oval, I mean, it looks like in its widest part, it could be a mile or more. And best I can, so I pulled up the three districts online, the three policing districts. And that oval actually is in part in central, the best I can tell, Central District and the other part in Campbellton District. So it really is not, you know, to say it's one street or another because you're halfway to Bag Boulevard on, on the western side and halfway to Ramsey Street on the other. I, I just, I think it'd be, it, the information, the data could be presented in a better way, I think. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Chief, you have more slides?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we take a look at the property crimes, you see that, uh, the only two categories we had an increase in twenty twenty-three were motor vehicle theft. Uh, we were just under seven hundred, the increase of twenty-seven point seven-five percent. And robberies, which were up, uh, by about twenty for eight, eight percent increase. My main concern was the motor vehicle theft with all the things that we did to try to, to, to stop the, the trend thefts for the Kias, Hondas and all that. We still had a record year for those, uh, actual theft of motor vehicles. And, and I put the juvenile slide next because it is key that there was a great juvenile influence in the amount of motor vehicle thefts that we had. Uh, as we look, the, 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 the graph to the, uh, the table to the left, that is the, the juvenile contacts that we had in, in twenty twenty-three. Uh, they're not all-inclusive. Those are the ones we were able to get reports on or we were able to document those field contacts with, uh, and identify the, my suspects. There were a total of nine hundred and twenty-one incidents there. The table to the right, that is actual petitions that we were able to obtain for the juveniles, either detention or to put them into the court system. Uh, I, the ones with the asterisks along there are the ones that caused me the greatest concern. If you look assaults, a hundred and fifty-two, there were only sixty-four reported for the first three quarters of twenty twenty-three. That's a hundred and thirty-eight percent increase in the last quarter of the year. If you look at B and E's, B and E's, there was only thirty reported for the first three quarters of the year. There were seventy-eight total to close out the year. That's a seventy-eight percent increase in juvenile B and E's. Shoplifting, there were twenty-three total incidents reported in the first three quarters of the year for, in a total of a hundred and fourteen for the end. That's an increase of three hundred and ninety-six percent for our shoplifting. Motor vehicle thefts, there were eighteen reported in the first three quarters of the year. There were fifty-one that we actually got petitions or court orders against juveniles on. And that's a hundred and eighty-three percent increase in the, in the, in those events for motor vehicle theft. Again, we had the events last year where we tried to get the upgrades to the cars. Uh, that is, that has worked well for us. It, it doesn't allow them to, to steal and keep a car. It's acted as a deterrent, but the, 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 the trend still persists. We plan on running a couple more of those events here in twenty twenty-four, and I think we have one planned for March. Drugs, we take a look at, uh, our drug seizures. If you look, cocaine was almost equal to what it was in twenty twenty-two with a seizure of sixty-nine point four kilos. Meth, we nearly doubled. Uh, there's twenty-nine ki- uh, point five kilos in twenty twenty-two, there's almost fifty-five in twenty twenty-three. Fentanyl from thirty-six kilos in twenty twenty-two to fifty-nine kilos in twenty twenty-three. You know, those are pretty significant increases in the amount of seizures, considering that we are probably only touching the surface of what's actually coming through our communities with those types of seizures. But those are, those are, those are large drug seizures for a community our size. Marijuana, which we didn't track in twenty twenty-two, I actually put it on for twenty twenty-three and I put the asterisk beside there. What we're seeing is a lot of our, our violence is being associated with low-level, street-level drug deals to include marijuana. Uh, there were several incidents of homicide where there were large amounts of weed that were found on scene. There were several robberies last year, and there were several home invasions that were attributed to, uh, weed sales within our community. As you look, I posted a couple of pictures of, of some, uh, busts that we had. It's not just weed on the table. There's weed, there's guns, there's fentanyl, there's, there's a whole gamut of, of drugs and, and pills that are associated with the sales of weed, uh, in twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-four. So Councilman Thompson, uh, this is one I was referencing to you earlier about our calls for service. Uh, if you take a look, uh, our dispatch center, they, they not just work for the police department, they, they actually dispatch the fire, uh, calls as well. The first, uh, graphic has a breakdown of how many police fires, calls for service were dispatched for police and fire for, there was a total of three hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and ninety-one for twenty twenty-four. Uh, that, that doesn't include the nine-one-one calls that they actually took in. There's a total of three hundred and forty-nine thou- uh, three hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty phone calls that were processed. And then there's some of the administrative work services they do. They do the audio requests, internal and, and public requests, and the quality assurance reviews for the nine-one-one calls that they take. In addition to that, our nine-one-one center is, uh, CLEA Public Safety Communications Accreditation. They've received their second award for that. And their Tri-Ace Accreditation, they've received their third award for that certification as well. And this is the number of traffic fatalities. Uh, yes, with a, a, a marginal decrease, down by one from twenty twenty-two. Uh, but we're looking at pedestrians, motorcycle speed is always going to be a, a, a contributing factor in the things that we're dealing with there. Uh, and that, that goes, that will lead us into when we talk about traffic stop reports and why we're stopping cars. Mayor, the next one is about, uh, our Fayetteville cares. This is our homeless initiatives and our mental health initiatives.
Yeah. Councilman Benavente had a question before he proceeded.
Yes, sir.
So it just shows a number of, uh, of, of contacts that our homeless coordinator and our mental health liaison have with our community out, uh, in total for twenty twenty-three. It should be noted that, uh, for the last quarter, we didn't have our mental health liaison that was on si- on scene, on site and working. Okay?
That, that was exactly my question, uh, Chief Braden. Could you tell us more about, um, staffing as it relates to our homeless coordinator?
Staffing?
Do we have one?
Yes, we have, we have, well, we have a homeless officer. And we have an actual civilian homeless coordinator that helps coordinate activities and, and, and services within our community.
And that's, we have one that's operating currently.
Correct.
Thank you.
A recap of twenty twenty-three when it comes to our LPR system. Uh, total of four hundred and seventeen arrests throughout the year, um, for misdemeanors, total of five hundred and seven for felonies. Uh, eighty-five recovered stolen vehicles, that's key, you know, and doesn't, doesn't really even touch the surface when we look at it. We had close to seven hundred that were stolen. Uh, vehicle seizures for evidence or flee to a lube, they, uh, captured thirty-eight as evidence. Uh, we're able to locate or find three missing persons and seize forty-one firearms in relation to our LPR systems. Just a general map of TSR data throughout the city shows that, that, that the entire city is covered with traffic stop activity and enforcement actions. So I, I took it, I pulled, this all comes from the, the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation's website, uh, as it regards our traffic stop data. Uh, I compared us to the state. Uh, this is all the, the stops, whether it was a checkpoint, DWI, safe movement violation, seatbelt, all the full reasons why we would end up stopping a car. And the number one reason for vehicle stops in, in Fayetteville, North Carolina is speed violations at a rate of thirty-nine point three percent. This is consistent with the statewide TSR data. That's every police department, every person that writes a ticket in North Carolina. Uh, the trend there is about forty percent across the board. Fifty-three point three-four percent of all stops are for moving violations consistent with statewide TSR data trends of fifty-one percent. So when I say moving violations, it's all the other ones, it's the speeding, it's the safe movement violations. It's these, uh, the, uh, stop signs, stoplights and things of that nature that are actually through the, uh, operation of your motor vehicle. I really wanted to take a look and see where we stand in comparison to other cities around the state. Uh, if you look, the, the top portion of this actual graph, the cities Charlotte, Raleigh, Greensboro, Durham, Winston-Salem and Fayetteville represent the top six cities with populations of two hundred thousand or more. In the middle there, I have the statewide representation of how many, uh, tickets were written statewide. And then we have Asheville. Asheville PD was the largest city found with the, uh, white demographic population above fifty percent. Rocky Mount was the largest city found with the black demographic of population above fifty percent. And we just wanted, I wanted to take a look and see where we stack up to these other cities, whether they're, what their demographic splits were, whether there was a size of the city. I think it's, it's, if you look at it, it's obvious that in, in the black driver category, just about every city stops has a TSR percentage higher than the actual demographic of the population that they, they, they represent. If you take a look, the top city, the, the, the city with the most black drivers stopped was Rocky Mount with eighty-one pers- uh, eighty-one percent. Fayetteville came in number two at sixty-four and Greensboro had sixty-four as well. But Rocky Mount, the black population makes up sixty-two, it's two percent of their actual demographic in their population. Fayetteville is represented, uh, forty-three percent in Greensboro and forty-two percent in Fayetteville. Asheville had the highest number of, of white drivers, uh, the lowest number of white drivers, highest number of white drivers stopped, lowest number of white populat- uh, highest number of white population, sorry about that. Winston-Salem was the next, and Raleigh came in third. Rocky Mount had the lowest amount of white drivers representing their population. Fayetteville was next with thirty-nine, then Greensboro with forty-two. I, I, and I know, Councilman Benavente, you asked for the other, why I consolidated everything. Uh, again, when I add on the TSR, there's only actually black, white, Asian, Indian and other when I take and pull, extract this data out.
All right, Chief, uh, Councilman Benavente. And then I had some other questions, uh, from Thompson and Max McLaughlin.
All right.
Yes, sir, and, and I don't think I'll wait on most of my questions, but, um, you remember this past Christmas, I gave you a gift. Uh, this book here by Professor Frank Bobnark Gardner called Suspect Citizens. Were you able to take a look through that at all?
Yes, I was able.
Well, one, one of the facts it, it describes is true, that every city in North Carolina stops and searches its black drivers at a disproportionate rate when compared to the population. I think the biggest difference is what are they doing about it? A lot of them are addressing it because they recognize it as a problem. So I think, you know, what you mentioned is very relevant, is, is objectively true. It doesn't necessarily absolve us of the fact that we're still doing this, but I'll pause there before I get to my another questions.
And I think as I take a look at this, as we go through this, this chart, you know, there's other factors that I think poss- possibly affect those numbers and those outcomes as well. Uh, again, running through the other populations, Fayetteville did come in in the top three, uh, for those. Total TSRs, and, and I think this goes to address some of the things that you said, uh, Mr. Thompson, uh, Councilman Thompson. You know, there was a perception that we weren't effectively dealing with speeders or traffic violations within our community. If you look, the number one person for the total number of TSRs in the state was Charlotte, well, outside of highway patrol. But the cities that are listed was Charlotte, North Carolina, was seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-four. And again, I know sometimes the perception is, is that we're not doing anything about the speeders or the violators out there. We were number two with forty thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. And that's about nine thousand less than my actual numbers of what we submitted to the state for reconc- to be reconciled at the state level. We recorded forty-nine thousand actual traffic stops for the city of Fayetteville for twenty twenty-three. So again, sometimes the perceptions, I don't believe, always represent the realities. We're actually out there stopping cars and writing tickets and enforcing traffic violations on a regular basis. At least to be number two within the list of cities that we're, we're talking about here. And then Raleigh came in behind us with thirty-nine thousand zero eight-eight. As I take a look, and I thought this was an interesting fact, uh, someone asked me, what were the other things outside of TSRs? What are other things that influenced, you know, it was put back to me, the question. I said, if I could affect poverty, if I could affect mental health, if I could affect addictions problems within the city, I could probably make a great impact on crime. Well, you know, as we comparison of our cities and peer cities that are on this list, the highest poverty rate was in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, with nineteen point six percent. Fayetteville came in at number two with eighteen point seven. And Greensboro came in third at eighteen point one zero. Looked at the dropout rate, uh, and all this came from the, uh, Department of Public Instruction, uh, for the state of North Carolina. Look at the dropout rates, the highest dropout rate for, for black students was Rocky Mount, with seventy-five percent of their dropouts were from the black community. Number two was Fayetteville, with fifty-one percent of our dropouts from the black community. And number three was Greensboro, with fifty-one percent of theirs. Highest dropout rate for white students, Asheville, which makes more sen- makes sense because they had the highest.
Greensboro actually was number two, right?
Being the worst. Well, if you look at it percentage-wise.
They're tied, right?
It was fifty-one, fifty-one, yes.
Okay.
Uh, next was Fayetteville with twenty-two percent, and then Winston-Salem with twenty-one percent. And lastly, I took a look at crime rates for twenty twenty-two because that was the last full year I could get from the SBI's website, twenty twenty-three data wasn't processed yet. The highest crime rate index was six thousand eighty-three for Asheville, North Carolina. Five zero seven six for Winston-Salem, and then Greensboro with four five eight six. What really stood out to me as I looked across this graph, you know, Fayetteville has circles in just about all of those, those categories, but we didn't come in the top three for that, that crime rate. So I, I just think that there's something to look at as a. So I just think that there's something to look at as other possibilities, that's why crime may be persistent in our community. So with that being said, we'll get into the actual traffic stops.
So I did have a couple council members that had questions, did you all want to ask your questions now, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin and Thompson? You let him proceed, okay. Okay, all right. All right. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Chief, thank you for, we hadn't seen everything, but for the presentation and the partnership with the Phoenix Center. My question is, if you can kind of give a ballpark figure as far as how much money do you feel is needed for recruitment to bring these numbers down as far as the crime that's taking place in our city? If you don't have those.
I think that would be something I'd have to sit down and speak with staff about to get a correct and accurate number. It's not one of some I was prepared really to talk about tonight as far as a monetary amount.
That's fine, if you can send that information over to staff. I am currently serving on the Governance Crime Commission and our last budget cycle, we did help fund, send some funds now to Durham and other cities. And I would like to bring some funds down here to our community, so if you can get those numbers together and then also for our staff, any grants that's out there, we can take advantage of those opportunities. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, you gave us a great slide when it came to the LPRs and the great effect that it has on catching predators in our community when it comes to a lot of drugs and traffic stops and thefts and recruitment of kids and cars. Have you put in a request every year for more LPRs to cover the entire city? And I believe during your last president, last quarter, I believe it was, we had a problem, I think it was with Duke Energy, I think it was giving us permission to use their power, have we rectified all those problems yet?
So yes, we should, we were past that problem, we're in the final implements, final implementation of all of our LPRs that we currently had. I wasn't prepared to make another request for more LPRs if I hadn't satisfied the commitments that we already had funded. So as we take a look at that, yes, consideration for what that need would be in the near future for LPRs.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, Chief.
All right. So total for 2022, there were 32,432 traffic stops in the city of Fayetteville. In 2023, that number is 49,752. Again, to fight the perceptions that we aren't stopping cars, we aren't writing tickets, we aren't doing those things, that's a 53% increase in traffic stops conducted from '22 to '23. Increased stops are driven by community complaints we hear every day at our, at our community watch meetings, we come into our website, I perceive complaints from council members, and we're observing those violations firsthand out on the streets. For the breakdown of that, you can see the breakdown of the black drivers, white drivers, and other drivers. Again, to the point, I was asked why all the others were in one category. The statistical significance of all those, they only account for 4% of the actual traffic stops. On our TSR data, it only gives us an option of black, white, Asian, Indian, and other, and it's a state form that we submit and all that data is collected. Hispanic is designated as ethnicity on those TSRs, and it doesn't break down the ethnicity when you look at the state site between black and white drivers.
All right, Councilman Benavente.
Chief Braden, if you can go back to slide 34. Thank you, Echo Park, for coming down. On slide 34. Oh, you're not going to bring it back up, okay, very good, I can look at it for a second.
Is that it?
No, sir, the camera's not showing it. Are there any efforts, or have they made any efforts since the last quarterly report to look at this slide and ask your department, the senior staff, whether there is an issue here? Because the population of Fayetteville is roughly 40% black, 40% white. And in this case, we're stopping black drivers at twice the rate of white drivers, much more than 40%, and white drivers much less than 40%. Is there any senior staff level discussions about how to address this disparity?
So yes, we've talked about this, addressing this disparity. As a police officer, I can put no racial input or bias into the reason for a stop. The outcomes, okay, what the race or the color of the driver is once that stop is conducted is something I have no control over. I think that we've taken a look, we broke it down statewide to show that we are writing and stopping cars and writing tickets consistent with what statewide averages are, where the percentages of speeders, the percentage of moving violations. The only outcomes that we see a difference in is the actual race of the driver at the end of the stop. Again, if I'm not allowed to have input based on race as to whether I stop a car, I can't control the outcomes once that car is stopped.
So, again, stops aside, I'm thinking definitely about the search rates as well. You were employed with Fayetteville Police Department back in 2013, correct?
Correct.
And do you recall the effort by the city council at the time to address this same sort of disparity?
Yes, the moratorium.
Moratorium, you know, some legislation, some calls to the state delegation for these unequal stops and searches of black drivers colloquially termed driving while black. Did you agree that there was a problem back then? That it requires city council at the time to make those moratoriums happen, to make those calls to our state delegation for assistance?
I wasn't involved in the administrative side of the house as I am today, or have been over the past three to five years. I was aware of the situation, okay, I was aware of some of the allegations. And yes, there was concerns where we weren't doing TSRs prior to some of those, the 2010 era. Where, yes, we started to document, and when we did start doing TSRs, I noticed that there were some failure to document properly. I can personally tell you that everybody I pulled over, if they just had a roach in their ashtray, I didn't write confiscated drugs and put that into evidence, I put that down as nothing was found. Even though probable cause potentially existed, there was drugs being used in the car, it didn't, wasn't actually being reported. Something we've tried to correct and course correct over the past several years is accurate reporting of data. You know, with the officers, they can't, they no longer write, give verbal warnings, everything has to be a written warning to document why they were stopped and articulate their probable cause, you know, we do a lot of directed patrols. If I'm doing a directed patrol for speed violations in an area of the city, it's because I've had complaints and it's documented why I was there, and it has complaints that were documented through either through community watch, call-ins, you know, emails from council people saying, hey, can you go here and do this, you know, do something about the speeders? That way, when we have an influx of complaints or whatever, it shows that the reason why we're in the areas and doing the things that we're actually doing.
But, well, I guess just to clarify, do you agree that the problem that the city council at the time identified was a worthy and relevant problem worth addressing back then?
Yes.
And so now, 10, 11 years later, the numbers are actually even more unequal. Is it a problem now worth addressing?
So the thing that hasn't been proven throughout these years is that there's disparate or biased acts on our police officers that lead to these stops. What I argue is, is that if we have valid probable cause, we're there taking enforcement actions that you, our council, that our community is asking us to do. We can't be held accountable for the outcomes of the race of those drivers when we're there doing the things we've been asked to do. Like I said, if there was any indication that there was bias or some kind of racial input on the front end by one of our officers, we would definitely take care of that because that would be illegal.
And I'll address this more in my comments after this, but I don't think it's necessary that we identify that your officers are racially prejudiced themselves and are conducting themselves that way. I think some of this is off, is very systemic, I think that we're obviously going to areas that are, you know, under-resourced and therefore, you know, as you mentioned, you know, may have more interactions with officers because they're there for other reasons. I mean, there's a lot of reasons for it, but there's also a lot of solutions to this problem. And I know it's not necessarily on FPD to address those solutions, I think that's on city council to address, but I think it's up to everyone in city council to look at that slide and say, are we comfortable with that disparity? Are we okay with the fact that we do this to one segment of our population the way that we do? Can we do better? And can we help our police officers avoid this, you know, really, really unequal sort of outcomes every year or every quarter?
So I would say this, and you've asked me this several times.
Yes, sir, every quarter.
Does it cause me concerns? And I truly took a step back.
Yes, sir.
After you provided me with a book to read, okay, I don't agree with everything in that book, but I took the time to, I didn't read the entire thing, but there were things highlighted with.
Fayetteville's in there.
Certain articles within the newspapers around, I went, I looked at those relevant sections. And yes, I did take a look around, and I can honestly tell you that, yes, those disparities, it causes me some concerns. But there's also disparities throughout this report, not just in traffic stops, but in the homicides, in the aggravated assaults, in the robberies, in the juvenile contacts. There's disparities in all those that cause me great concern. But I've thoroughly, thoroughly looked at traffic stops for the past year, and I have found no evidence that we have biased input from the police department to affect the outcomes that you're seeing me present tonight.
Yeah, not on an individual basis, I don't believe so, but I think systemically, there are bigger issues, and I think you talked about it yourself a moment ago when you showed the dropout rates. You showed some of these other factors that you feel are persisting.
That's not my system, though.
That's not, well, it's ours, and that's why I guess I'm trying to make clear to our city council, this is not, you know, me and Chief Braden going back and forth about the police department. It's really me going back and forth with the other rest of this council to address these stark, startling, disappointing statistics, because 10 years, 10 years later, the police department cannot fix this problem. It is not a police's role to fix, it's ours as policymakers to address these issues that are resulting in the majority of black drivers in this city being unnecessarily stopped, unnecessarily searched, filling our courtrooms unnecessarily, unfairly, unequally. It's up to us to do something about that.
So I think that's where we got to sort of be careful, we're saying that they're being stopped unnecessarily. We investigated over 52 homicides this year. We investigated over 1,000 aggravated assaults this year, okay? Part of our investigation is going into areas, identifying vehicle suspects, making those stops, and doing all those things. And I think part of the problem that we're seeing is, is that we're being told, go out there, write more tickets for the speed violations, but we're being questioned on the back end, are we stopping people disparately?
Searching them, yes, because I think when you're stopping folks and it becomes the crime scene that it does at every moment.
Well, I haven't got to this actual search slides yet, those are forthcoming.
We can get there. I guess the point remains, we can't conflate your speeding stops necessarily with things like tent, things, there's a lot of different kinds of stops, we're getting too deep in the weeds.
We actually do a TSR for every stop that we do.
So, thank you, Councilman Benavente, and, you know, I know, Chief, you still have some slides to go. I think, Councilman Benavente, you kind of implied that the city council has the authority to do certain things, we've got best practices. Now, what happened back in 2012 and 13 that I recall, and, you know, maybe the older, more mature seasoned guy on here can even school me on it because I wasn't on council. But they, they attempted to get in front of the state statute to say what law enforcement officers could do. I know they made it a policy to say you couldn't search and you put a pause on it, and I think the Attorney General's office weighed in and said, you know, councils don't have the authority to override the state, so some of what you're talking about is a larger system reform, because it's not just Fayetteville, it's other areas that have these same disparities with just criminal justice reform, and I think we could be here a couple of days, all night and all day, just talking about how that system can do better. But what I, what I would ask, Chief, my question in all of that is, data drives you to where you are, and I do, I am looking, if you go back to the homicide and to the ag assault. Now, this is what troubles me here, because, you know, I've been profiled, I'm black male, and I could, I'm sure, Councilman Benavente, I've been profiled more than you and some of that, but I do agree with your passion.
So the homicide slide?
But the homicide and the ag assaults, that, that, that is disproportionate.
Correct.
Okay, that 70, 79% or 40 or 41 were victims and suspects were both black, were black. And then the whites were 10 and nine out of all of those homicides for 2023.
Correct.
That 40 of them were there, so I just want to make sure that, that you all have data to show what areas speeders are speeding, you have data that shows where, where your patrols are needed, that it's driven by data, that you're doing equal stops across the board, not just, you know, because I agree, you probably can't tell who's in the car, what color they are until you pull them over. But you're not doing all checkpoints on, on one side of town where it's predominantly black and none on the other side of town. How does that balance out? That's what I'm a little bit more concerned with.
Well, that goes back to the slide where I showed you the, the actual TSR mapping, where it has the purple dots that basically cover all main thoroughfares within our city.
Okay.
So, you know, maybe next time I do a heat density map to show you the denser areas of actual traffic stops.
What slide is this, what number is that? Okay. So what you're saying is that, but that same corridor that you drew a circle around, so if you take that same sample that you used, that we just had this long conversation about, and draw it here, are there going to be more stops in that circle than there are outside of that circle?
I would say there probably, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make an assumption at this point.
Right, but your computer that targeted that same area, you can provide that information.
No, we're talking about 50,000 data points, I would have to get a heat density map to show you where a bulk majority of those actual incidents are occurring. What happens when we put the, the heat density map on there, the city begins to glow, because there's so many that are densely packed.
Here's where I'm going with that. On the one hand, you say, you know, there are more incidents in these areas, which is why we're there in the first place, which is why we're making the stop, so you're drawing a correlation between it. On the other hand, no, wait a minute, you're saying that we get the calls and that there are disparities in the, in the victims and the, and the perpetrators are being in predominantly black areas, so that, that could speak to why the, the other number is a disparity.
Not, not really, because we don't use traffic enforcement as a way of, we articulate probable cause on why we're stopping the cars, but we're one of the few agencies in the state, I would be willing to say, that does a TSR for every time we cut the blue lights on. That is some of the outcomes, the policies that were changed back in the previous years where, you know, no, we no longer have the opportunity to give you a warning ticket, okay, or a warning, a verbal warning. We no longer have the opportunity to say, is this, is this an actual traffic offense or is this, you know, an investigative stop? 100% of every time a blue light goes on, we're doing that TSR data, so it's collected and it's available to be looked at and to be, but, no. I don't generally use traffic enforcement to identify who's a murder suspect, who's an ag assault suspect. Those are purposeful stops that are dedicated through generation of probable cause and articulation of probable cause as to how it relates to the crimes we're investigating. But yes, we do do TSRs for every traffic stop that is conducted within the city.
All right. All right, Councilman Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, just a quick question. Chief, each time an officer stops a vehicle, do their camera automatically start recording or?
Yes.
Each time you guys pull somebody over?
The blue lights in the car, that is one of the big things, it's a trigger for the actual in-car camera. And we have with the new technology that has come out over the past year, we've started installing those where that not just activates the in-car camera, but it'll activate any body worn camera within vicinity of those blue light activations.
And again, every time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
All right, Chief, you have more slides?
Yes.
All right. My goodness.
So I was asked to provide the search rates, so this is slide 36. The only items listed in the contraband found are as follows, drugs, alcohol, money, and other. The reason I didn't include the, the alcohol and the other in here, again, they were significantly insignificant as to the total numbers. As we looked, the black drivers were stopped to search comparison, there were 31,816 stops on black drivers. That resulted in 1,313 searches of vehicles, that's about 4% of the actual traffic stops. Out of those actual searches, there's 1,313 drugs were found on 608 incidents and weapons were found in 256 incidents. So that's 65% of the vehicle searched resulted in a seizure of weapons or drugs. And again, knowing what you have to articulate to search a car, we have to establish a level of probable cause. Articulate why we're going to search, why we believe there's a gun in there, why we believe there's drugs in there. Sorry, I'm out of the presentation mode. White drivers were stopped a total of 16,230 times, there were 296 vehicle searches conducted, that accounts. There were 296 vehicle searches conducted, that accounts for about 2% of the vehicles stopped. Out of the 296 vehicle searches, drugs were found in 127 incidents and weapons in 41. That's a total of 42% of the vehicle searched resulted in a seizure of weapons or drugs. Other drivers, this includes all Asians, Indians, and any other. That's 1,924 total stops. There were 38 vehicle searches. Of those 38 vehicle searches, drugs were found in 14 and weapons in nine. That's a total of about 60% of the vehicle searched resulted in a seizure. Any further questions about the traffic stops, hit rates, seizures?
We'll try to let you get through these other slides.
Officer Professor Sanders, the Internal Affairs Unit. Use of force, we did show an increase in use of force. Remember back in 2022, we added pointing of a weapon into a use of force investigation? That was probably about halfway through the year. Am I correct in that, Major Joyce? So that's why I expect that we had a full year on the record for 2023 for those pointing of weapons as a use of force. Our internal investigations, these are the proactive investigations we conduct internally. There's an increase from 56 to 74. That just shows we're investigating more, we're questioning more about these officers, about their practices. And we're trying to investigate to find out what is truly going on. Citizen complaints had a total of 55 for 2022, 47 for 2023. That's a total for the year. And compliments, we had a total of 26 in 2022 and up to 39 in 2023. So as you talk about use of force, I wanted to compare the data of use of force to assault on our officers and resisting arrest charges. As you, I went all the way back to 2018 and documented through this chart graph each of those years. I believe that what this truly shows is that our officers encounter resistance and assaults at a greater rate than we actually use force. Use of force review, this is the breakdown of use of force, tasers, hands-on, pointing of weapons, firearm discharges, OCs, batons. Has a breakdown of the demographics of the population there. Yes, blackmails were the most predominant individuals force was used on. But I also broke down the resisting arrests, the assaults on officers through the racial demographics. And again, I think what this chart actually shows is that we utilize force much less that we encounter resistance, assaults, or people trying to elude us. I think one of the big things, and I didn't have a lot of data from previous years, we're seeing more people actually take off and flee from cops as we're trying to deal with the speed problems, the car club problems, the off-road vehicles, the ATVs on our roadways. We're seeing that fewer and fewer people are actually stopping. So, you know, and that, I think that's a total of 70, 76 vehicle chases for the year, those are the ones we documented. That's not everyone that actually just took off. Those are the ones that we actually chased and we were able to have do a CIR or a report upon. There are numerous others that we're going to try to collect even better data this year, showing how many people on a daily basis just take off and run from the cops in high-speed pursuits. We don't always follow, we have a restrictive chase policy for violent crimes. But I think it's a category we need to pay closer attention to as it becomes more prevalent within our community. I could go back to that previous, I think this is to Ms. Councilwoman Banks McGlaughlin. Yes, there were 6,732 misdemeanor arrests and felony arrests in 2023. 82 incidents resulted in a use of force. That represents only 1.2% of all arrests made. So if we take 82 out of 6,732, that's 1.2% of the arrests made resulted in some type of use of force. The FPD investigates every use of force incident through the chain of command. That guarantees at least six sets of eyes that are put on to that actual encounter. And we try to ensure at every level that the type of force utilized was reasonable and necessary. That's what we have to show and prove in order to say that it was a good use of force. That's the verbiage that's written into the use of force general statute. The FPD utilizes analytical software to track officer performance that provides alerts and warnings based on use of force incidents. That's not just through the IA software, but yes, through Axon. It shows us how many alerts we're getting, who's failing to categorize video, who's got the most videos falling off. So we can take a proactive approach to make sure that officers are constantly doing the right things for the right reasons. Departmental staffing for 2023. Closed out the year, there were 59 vacancies December 31st. One sworn part-time vacancy, 14 non-sworn, 10 non-sworn part-times in a total of 84. I broke down there the reasons, either resignation, retirement, or dismissed. There were a total of 19 retirements from the city last year. That's a big number of people that are truly just able to walk away because their time and service is up. Okay, but the bigger number is the resignations. We're looking at, you know, I'll have more data in the future to talk about where people are going and what the purpose of leaving us as we analyze a lot of these resignations that we had. And real quick, we'll go over the different community events that we had. Faith in Blue Weekend, we had our March Against Violence in Massey Hill. That's following the multiple shootings that we had in Massey Hill through the summer. Downtown Trick or Treat, this is just the fourth quarter. Coffee with the cop events, our Blue Street Senior Center that we go to almost on a monthly basis. Shop with the cop events. The homeless stand down, multiple birthdays throughout the quarter where kids have come, taken tours of the police department. Our Stop the Bleed. Our Pal Breakfast, our senior senior Christmas parties. And lastly, Chief Dove's not here. I wanted to remind him that the police department did beat him twice in softball last year. And that's all, that's all I have for the slides.
All right, Councilman Benevente, third round, second round.
If you can go back to slide 40. How would you respond to someone's concern that your inclusion of the table related to assault on an officer is an attempt to blame? I'm trying to ask this in the form of a question. 100% of the time you pointed the weapon, it was against black people. 100% of the time they used pepper spray, batons, and canines was against black people. And I think it's crazy that you have this table saying that, well, they deserved it because they resisted arrest. And so I don't know why you put that table there, sir.
It's to show the amount of resistance we're experiencing because it's relevant to the amount of force that we're using. We can only use force if we show that someone is assaulting us, resisting us, failing to submit to our authority, which is the requirement by general statute, that we use that force. Again, I'm not saying every single one of these incidents represent a certain crime, a certain act. But it does, to me, show relevance that the amount of resistance that we're seeing is growing within our community. You said there was a lull back during the COVID years, but there's a big rise in what we're seeing as far as assaults on officers and resisting officers, resisting arrest. And I think that's relevant to the amount of force that we utilize. You can't tell one story without telling the other one.
Well, I think the way that you're telling the story, much like you did with Merchison Road, you know, drawing it in a way that everyone here, you know, felt like was quite the stretch. You know, I'm seeing a lot of slides here unfortunately that are painting a picture that I think it's not hard for anyone to look at this and say, man, the police department is really trying to justify a lot of its disproportionate impact on the black community.
No, it's our job through every use of force that we have that we justify that. It's our job to justify every traffic stop that we do. It's our job to justify every arrest that we make. So yes, I'm trying to justify those things because that is what we're required to do.
So I asked you this last time when it came to traffic stops and searches. What is your concern now when you look at the fact that the majority of the time that we're using force on citizens of Fayetteville is against black citizens of Fayetteville at a highly disproportionate rate? Does that bring you concern for anyone other than your officers?
No, it does, it brings me great concern. But there's other disparities that I pointed out throughout this slide deck of great disparities in use of force, great disparities in traffic stops, great disparities in our homicide rates, great disparities in our aggravated assault rates, great disparities in our robbery rates.
And page 38, you talk about the citizen complaints. I know you mentioned that there was an incident that was filmed that generated over 200 citizen complaints, but that you felt a majority of them were personal attacks and not necessary to be counted.
No, that's not correct.
Please clarify.
Okay, we had one incident where we had over 200 entries of people saying their opinions, okay?
Were they complaints or opinions?
No, well, I'll give you an example of one. One simply typed into our website, oink, 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 oink. I didn't count it, to me, that's not a complaint. But out of those 200, if there was one valid complaint, we did the internal investigation, which was conducted. All it took was actually one valid complaint, but a bulk majority that we encountered were just like that, oink, 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 oink. But we were able to determine that one of those was a valid complaint, so we did the internal investigation. So the comparison I gave to you was, if 100 people here was a single shot fired and one person dies, is that 100 homicides or is that one homicide that 100 people saw?
I think the difference is that you were talking about trends and whether or not you would address, you know, an issue that was clearly something separate from the normal complaint. And I guess in this case of the 200, what would you say, how many of the 200 were valid complaints?
Very, almost none.
Okay, so out of the 200, less than 100?
I would have to go, I didn't look at every single complaint. That's our internal affairs did look at that, but they showed me some of the most outrageous ones. Yes, that just said, oink, 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 that's not a complaint. And I sort of, I broke that down for you of what I would consider a valid complaint. Whether there was an action by an officer, that someone took offense to, that they could articulate, they were treated unfairly or unjustly, then we would take a look at that. And like I said, there was one out of that vast majority of complaints. But it doesn't count as 200-plus complaints for that one incident.
So the Internal Affairs Group, before it gets to you, reviews complaints that come in to see whether or not they reach you or are valid for your review? And will filter most of them out if they don't feel like they're valid?
Councilman Benevente.
Well, maybe there's another time that we can discuss the complaints policy in that case. I'll leave it at that, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor, I was going to say, if there's no any, if there's no other questions, I would like to motion to receive the report.
All right, before you make your motion, I do have another question by Councilwoman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, great report, you guys do a great job. But I do have a question, and it might be related to training. Since you have just, with your data show that we have just lost, what, 123 officers over the past year? And that's with the search of drivers, black and white.
Okay.
The percentage rate is 65 and one and 42 in the other. What type of mechanism do you use to help train the young officers into finding those key factors or indicators that they need to know to identify which vehicles need to be searched? And I'm going to tell you why. For a family of four being in a car and you search their vehicle and find nothing, that is a significant emotional event for that family.
Correct.
How do we lower that number?
So, it's almost an impossible task. We're not going to be 100% right 100% of the time, okay? So when we look at, even for the ones where no contraband was found. Like I said, the TSRs, it was asked me a question of how, why am I not finding more? Because I wasn't, I could articulate the probable cause, I pulled the car over, it smelled like weed. Guess what, they just got done smoking weed in the car. I'm not going to be covering any drugs out of that car unless I'm going to charge them with a roach or with some marijuana seeds, something of that nature. But it doesn't change the fact that probable cause existed for me to search that car. And even though I didn't find anything that was chargeable or end up charging with anything that was seizeable, okay, it didn't change the fact that probable cause did exist for that vehicle. What we look at is what the officers articulate in their reports, okay? When we look at a complaint, you know, one of the things I do especially for use of force, I don't want the opinion of the person who just reviewed it before me. I want to hear what that officer put in their statement. I listen to strictly what the officer said and whether they met the level of articulation of probable cause, justify any use of force they have, articulate reasonable suspicion to stop a car, articulate probable cause to search that car based on knowledge, skills, and experience. And again, I don't think we ever have 100% search rate. There's going to be those where you just don't have it, but probable cause did exist.
I got that, Chief, but I want you to elaborate on having a young force or a trained-up force.
Yes.
Because I'm pretty sure you're not the one that's handling it. I don't know if it's the captain in Cross Creek or Sentry or Hamilton or the lieutenant that's handling those. That way we can train them up.
So we're constantly training. Even with our staffing shortages, one of the things that we haven't stopped is pulling our officers to go to training. Right now, in 2024, the entire police department, that is every police officer that is sworn in, that wears a badge, to include myself, will go through a three-day trainer. That three-day trainer that we're going through is how to have better contacts and when it comes to dealing with the individual.
That's what I was.
That's day one. How do we interact and deal with individuals? This is based on some critical incidents we've had in 2023. When do we search, when do we not search, when do we pat down, when do we not pat down? Day two is interactions with a vehicle. It's not just someone walking down the street, how do I do a traffic stop? Knowing that it's a speed violation, what difference or changes when I think there's a murder suspect involved? What's different or changes when I think it's a stolen motor vehicle that's likely to flee from me? It's a whole day just to those conversations of stimulating that conversation and thought. And day three is how do we deal with structures? Whether it's a house, we have chasing somebody and they ran into a house. How do I sit there and safely do those things? So the training's there. And I think what you're getting at is a conversation that we had before of, we've lost a whole generation of cops.
Exactly.
Okay, 42% of my workforce, and I have to reschedule that or relook at that actual number because I did that, I think, last year for the, when we gave a report to council on our staffing and retention issues. And in September, I think it was 42% of my workforce on patrol has been here two years or less. So we got to make sure that we're motivating my senior cops to stay on patrol, teach these young cops how to do their job, motivating those sergeants to actually go out and be in those young cops' business, watch those videos, okay? You know, Memphis, everybody remembers the incident in Memphis last year where the cops basically assaulted an individual and beat him to death. Very, as a brand-new police chief, I said, hey, this can't happen here. We got to make sure that we're watching these videos. We got to make sure that our sergeants are out there actually training, mentoring, and developing these young officers into the officers that we want to see them be.
Well, Chief, that type of answer is the type of answer I think that reassures our public and our communities and our city to let them know that you're doing all that you can to alleviate those, I want to call them mistakes, but those incidences. What you haven't talked about is recruitment. You haven't said when the next class was, how many's in the class, so forth and so on. We understand you have 59 vacancies, where are we?
Right now, we have a group that is out in field training. I think there's seven that are currently out doing their field training operations. That means they're riding with a trained police officer, going through that phase of. And I have 17 that are in the actual academy. So by the summertime, I'm hoping to have 17 and seven, about 23 back on the road and seeding another academy for the second half of 2024. So, you know, hopefully we can make up about two-thirds of the difference, you know, and slow some of the departures out, you know, when I showed you 78% of our losses through resignations right now.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Chief, we appreciate the report. Before I go to Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, I want to clear up something because we're working, you know, it's undeniable, some of this, you can't, the pendulum can't go all the way from no stops to overpolicing. And so somewhere in the middle is a balance. I think you're trying to strike that. I don't want it to come out of this that we all recognize there's a problem here that there's 1,300 searches compared to 296. That just doesn't add up with the population, so we're not saying that. The kind of thing I want to hear, because we know all weed smokers are not black people or whatever the probable cause is, you said that there are some people that you stopped and because they have a roach in there, you decided not to charge them, right? Because, so there is discretion with officers, we understand that. So to, in a supportive way, I want to speak to what type of training are we having for just understanding racial lines and making sure that the officers who use this discretion are also. are also fully trained? I'm not, I'm not looking at it from an egregious standpoint, a gotcha moment saying any of that. What do we, speak to a little bit of the training that we're doing to make sure that that kind of thing, as you bring on this new group of, a generation of police officers, that they're being trained with racial consciousness?
So I think that goes back to many of the things that I talked about before, I was part of that group, that were the first line of people that had to do TSRs. And when that first wave of TSRs came out, we realized, hey, we're not doing this number, not getting, it's not articulating, it's not telling the story as it actually is. So when we went through, like I said, Fayetteville Police Department, I would argue is probably one of the few that do a TSR for every stop that we do, okay? With that, with reviewing of the actual body-worn cameras, you know, having the sergeants academies, the new sergeants go out and ride with these individuals, officer discretion is not something that's actually taught, okay? You either got good judgment, or you don't. Again, for me, am I gonna ruin someone's life for a roach in an ashtray? I think them not arresting that person is a good judgment call, it's good use of discretion, okay? But also, they're not, they're not putting those things in, I think that is something that we lack right now, not that we lack it, we're developing, because we have so many young and new officers. You know, are they gonna charge someone with a roach, is that the intended outcome that we want? No, but we wanna be able to articulate and document the fact that probable cause did exist, so that we know that there's no issues on the back end of what's going on. If you're saying that, that there's potential for disparate outcomes of the choices that I make, again, that's one of the things that we look at when we, when we do our, our actual reviews. I've seen people get warning tickets, and I've called those officers in, and I made the supervisor just tell me, how do we justify this being written as a warning ticket? You know, that probably goes both ways, it goes upstream and downstream of where that officer discretion is, and I think that's us, and the learning curve that we have as a young department with a bunch, a lot of young supervisors, that we're working on to make sure exists. We do the racial, juvenile minority sensitivity training every year through our in-service training. Again, one of the issues that we wanted to talk about this year is, how do we get positive outcomes on our personal one-on-one interactions with people? That's why we brought actual outside instructors in to help us teach that three-day course of how do I deal with people, how do I make these decisions, how do, you know, how do I articulate these things, in a manner that is gonna be, and it's not just that, it's about, I've told people to start narrating a lot of their stuff on body-worn cameras. You know, if you watch a video, and it's, I can see it now, as, after a year, seeing some of the internals that come through, instead of someone just saying, oh, I got a speeder, they're locking in, hey, I got this car, this fast, heading this direction, you know? I've tried to talk our officers into narrating, not just saying that, okay, I'm getting ready to search your car, but on that body camera, say, okay, smells like someone's been smoking weed, is there been any weed in the car? Nah, nah, we smoked it all. You know, those are the kind of things that, the finesse of being an officer, that I think is the top.
Right, and I guess what I'm saying, and I wanna bring this home, because you've been, you've been very diligent with answering the questions, and I do think, I want the resounding message to go, in my opinion, I think you guys are doing a great job, you taking some dangerous stuff off the street, but we have, we can never get complacent in the areas of improvement, right? And so, I hope that this budget, you will have more required training, that that's an investment for the city. And I'm not sure about what the demographics are of the officers themselves, do you know that right off, black to white, roughly?
No, I wanted to say it was like thirty percent black.
So it's a disparity there, right? And so, and so that could be something that we, like we did with the fire department a few years ago, try to balance that a little bit, so that the community that they protect and serve reflects.
Right now, with sixty-nine vacancies.
I understand, I understand, we gotta address that regardless of what, but, but at the end of it, I think the guys, and the outcomes will be appreciative that this can be a target for action, that we'll try to level this off a little bit, rather than it being a confrontational thing. So, so I think, I wanna receive the report, I received positive out of it tonight, and at the end of the day, I hope that we shared some stuff with one another that we can grow on. So, all right, so Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Okay, and just to, for clarity too, city manager, do you or do you not supervise or manage our police department? And they present reports to city council? Okay, thank you, and I motion to receive the report.
Motion by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, second by Councilmember Thompson, all right. Councilmember Benavente?
Yeah, no, I have discussion on this item. Mayor Colvin, I think you're absolutely right, and I just wanna say that, I hope it is the feeling of the entire council, this is an issue we can address, there is, there is something that we can do about these numbers, we don't have to be satisfied with the status quo, which is that, right now, in the city of Fayetteville, we spend most of our tax money to one department, and this one department is disproportionately stopping and searching just our black drivers, seventy-eight percent of the time that we use force is just against black people, and that we are somehow satisfied with that, or we think that that's a good job, I don't think is accurate. I think they do a great job when it comes to converting on their homicides, they do better than the national average, we should be proud of that fact. They're working great with the Phoenix Center when it comes to issues of domestic violence, we should be proud about that. But we do not have to say, overall, that we're satisfied with the way that our black drivers get treated, that way black citizens get treated, we can absolutely do things to address it. And one thing that their experts talk about is that it has nothing to do with training, it has nothing to do with the racial demographics of the police department, there are real policy changes that can come up, and that cities have implemented, that have reduced the disparity in the way we stop, search, and use force against black citizens. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, after we accept this report, make a motion that we direct our internal community safety committee to make this a priority for city council, that we address the issue of disproportionate stops and searches, because as Councilmember Thompson mentioned, we're not accounting for the statistics that we can't write down, about people who've been stopped, traumatized, who feel unwelcome in their own city, who have no recourse when they've been stopped and searched unfairly, and can't exactly complain, and can't exactly get any sort of justice from that incident, or from that unnecessary interaction. So if we wanna reduce that harm, that is very difficult to calculate, that has been articulated to me, that people don't understand why a city council, which was much less diverse than this one ten years ago, had more courage to address this issue than our current city council.
Councilmember, get to your point on the motion.
Absolutely.
Right.
I think it's high time that we recognize this as a problem, and that we actually do something to address it, so I'll make that motion after we complete this vote.
Well, that's fine, but you know, there's a couple of issues to, a couple of things you said, I mean, you, I can assure you, I've been profiled more than you have, all right? And, and so, what I'm saying is, is that I wouldn't call it non-courageous, okay? Or say anything, overall, the trending seven years of decline is a good job, right? Now, there's improvement, and satisfaction wasn't a word that I used if you were addressing that, I said, we can't be satisfied, we always gotta strive to improve, so I think that we're saying similar things, but I would be more inclined to let the police officers tell us what the best practices are, and come back, and if that's a committee issue that you all wanna study, but not specifically getting in the way of the enforcement side, because up, North Carolina has a problem with it, and whatever we pass, and whatever we do, has gotta fit within what this, this, this general assembly says you can do, and we know what we're dealing with with that. So with that, there was a motion on the floor, there was discussion, and council, I'd look to you for votes to receive the report. All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous of those voting. All right, Councilmember Benavente, quickly, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin, there was. There was some discussion about how committees, county council committees can bring things back to work sessions without necessarily being a council member request, so with that in mind, I'd like for us to make a motion right now, that the community safety committee on city council can look at this issue, disparate stops and searches, what we can do to address it based on things that are legal in North Carolina, and be able to bring that back to a work session, without necessarily having to do a council member request, because we're asking right now that this be something that we can work on. My motion is I move that the community safety committee is allowed to address disparate traffic stops and searches, and return to a future work session with recommendations for the full council to approve.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Benavente, is there a second? All right, second by Councilmember Davis, discussion on that motion? Counsel, I would say, I would say, just for clarification purposes, the direction that we've expressed tonight, the manager heard it, chief heard it, and I would be interested as professional law enforcement officers, as what they say. Now, if this is something that, I guess Councilmember Benavente's proposal was that there's also a separate action in lieu of, or running parallel to, I'm not sure, but that's the motion on the floor, that he's asking for this to be a committee assignment, which I don't know that you would need a council action for that.
To be able to bring it back, because it's the same way that we've allowed the policy committee to address certain issues on public forum, we put that on them, so that when they came back a month later, it made sense.
All right, Councilmember, here you have a question?
Yes, but, thank you, but do we, something of this magnitude, very important, very important, been an issue? Do we just leave it to us? Do we just leave it to us, because you said that the committee would bring it back for a motion to accept, or something along that same?
That's right, I mean, if we wanna bring in other experts in this field, folks that can give you a one-sheet on this.
Full council can digest, very simply, without having to necessarily sit through months, weeks, and weeks of committee meetings, you guys will get a one-sheet, the same way that the policy committee has come back with recommendations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I appreciate doing it that way, I understand you keep tying this into the policy and the.
As an example.
Well, but it's so far, it's so far left or right, whichever way we can, we can throw that, just from the standpoint of, the dynamics of it is so much different, okay, than the policies, this, to me, the little smaller, simpler, simpler policies that, sometimes that we deal with, and I don't want to, to bring those down. So I think that this particular item that you're speaking of, from my perspective, I would like to at least have some, some additional support in those meetings with our committee, before just coming to us, and then we have to just up and make a decision, yeah, and nay on it, my thoughts.
We could have Chief Brayden come to our meetings as well.
All right, so Councilmember Benavente, I have Mayor Pro Tem, and then Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so what I will say, the policy committee keeps coming up, coming up, and I chair that committee, you know, the first thing is on the policy committee, you know, we have a book that we're going through and looking at, and we have the lawyer right there with us, keeping us legal on what we can do and what we can't do. And what I, yes, sir, you are, you are, three months, congratulations, I think that we need to look at this, I mean, we're talking about making some serious decisions here, and talking about something that has not been in any of our wheelhouse, as much as we say it is, it's not in our wheelhouse, we're not police officers, we're not out there. But I guess to me, we've been given all this about the OCS, and Dr. Tate, and bringing him back as a counsel, doesn't this incline with Dr. Tate? Instead of us, I mean, this is the cart before the horse, I think we've, we've talked, we're gonna have him come back, we're trying to get the OCS up, and we're trying to get this going.
Yeah.
I don't understand why we, the ten of us, will be making this decision without the professionals at the table, just my opinion. So I cannot support that without, you know, because we made a commitment that Dr. Tate was coming back and discuss all of this.
All right, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we should ever get into the business of trying to tell the police how to police. I would never go for that, I think if we have a concern or issue about any specific area, we bring it to the police chief's attention, and we let him figure it out, with him and his staff. They're the experts in this field, and we are not, so I don't think I could support this either.
All right, quickly, this is your second round, and your motion, so we're gonna wrap this up, we'll call for questions shortly.
And this is what I wanna look straight into the camera, if it can get put on me, this is the fundamental cultural shift the city of Fayetteville needs to undergo, the police do not equal public safety. We, as a board, have all the authority to address public safety issues, and that does not happen just with the police department, does not happen only through the police department, we can bring down crime in this community without arrests going up, we can absolutely address issues of public safety without the police. So you're right, Councilmember Thompson, this isn't a matter of telling the police what they can and can't do, it's about us saying we can address those issues, that we saw in those statistics, in many different ways, and if we're worried about experts coming through, Professor Frank Baumgartner will be glad to come through, we have a connection with him, we have other folks that are addressing safety when it comes to traffic stops, we can bring all those experts in, there's people that we can bring in through the committee work, that'll then produce a product that all of us can understand and move forward with, and it's not about telling the police what to do, it's about what we as a city are addressing public safety issues about, that is absolutely in our wheelhouse, and if it's not us ten, then who?
All right, thank you, all right, council, look to you for action on the motion that's been presented. Council, looking for you for votes. Who hasn't voted? Okay, all right, all right, motion to send that to the committee fails, Mr. Manager, I hope you were clear on some of the things that you can work with the chief on, that the council is interested in, with helping to level set those numbers, to make sure that we are being as proportionate as we can with enforcement and the other strategy, so.
Yes, sir, and, but, Mr. Mayor, thank you for recognizing, I was gonna try to ring in, I know that, speaking of several of you as well, that there was a concern about recruitment, retention, and compression issues, we'll be bringing that back to council, hopefully asking you to do a special meeting in March, that we can talk about recruitment, not only in fire, I mean, police, but also in fire, public safety, as well as others, but specifically on addressing some of the questions that came up from you before this meeting, and some during this meeting. I would say that, when I look back on tonight's presentation, as will you, I think that the main numbers, and what we're gonna lead with is, is that crime is down, it's down for several years, arrests are up, I know there's a concern about the, about the traffic stops and other issues, and we will work very hard to address that, but I think that the council and the community should be heartened by the fact that the violent crime that, and the crime numbers that we're seeing are lower over the last seven years, that enforcement, not traffic stops, I understand it's a whole separate issue, is up, and even when we're carrying fifty-five vacancies on average. But I know that not only are your words resonating with the chief and myself, but your support of the police department resonates with the citizens too, and we are coming back in March, I think it is, Jody, with the citizen satisfaction survey, and I think that'll also be informative in some of the areas that have come up tonight as well, but thank y'all for your support, thank you for your questions, we've heard them, and your concerns as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Chief, thank you to the PD, you guys are doing a great job, we're just, you know, speaking on some things that we wanna work with you on, not against you, so, but we appreciate your hard work and your effort, filling those gaps with, with what you have to deal with. All right, I do wanna send, council, that administrative report item, I wanna see if we can send that back to a work session, it was some of the, the lean information that they had on five-year more lanes, the city attorney had attached it as an administrative report, so, Councilman Mahadra? All right, all right.
So move.
All right, so, that's all you need? Okay, all right, motion adjourned, all right, have a good evening. All right, have a good evening.